Okay, I'd like to open on request. This is to open a public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM on our request by Monsieur Gallivale of Hotel North Hampton for site plan approval to allow decorative unshielded lights to illuminate sculptures at 36 King Street, North Hampton, MAP ID 32825. Advertised on November 24th and September 25th. Who wants to present that?
I'm Steve Smith. I've been the manager of this project to create this New Year's ball. It's on the roof of the hotel. It's been a volunteer effort on my part. And so I'm here. Alma Villa from the hotel is also here, but I'll do the talking since I designed the lighting system. So you've seen the application. I assume that everyone has seen the ball by now.
No.
And so what we would like to do, the ball historically for the past 20 years has been only used on New Year's Eve and taken away. In the past year, we created this much more sculptural ball. It's a six-foot diameter globe with made of stainless steel and copper. And as the process of creating this ball evolved, we started to think that it was so nice that we hated to hide it for 364 days a year. So we are working with the city to leave it in place throughout the year. And our request tonight is regarding lighting, for which I believe we need a special permit. We would like to have spotlighting on the ball. I have a handout of this if the committee would like it. Come on. There are sort of three elements to the lighting system that we'd like to utilize throughout the year. The first is reflective spotlights, and this is three 90-watt spotlights, which are located below the parapet wall. There's a four-foot-high parapet wall around the roof. So the spotlights are located below the wall and they shine up at the ball. The beam spread on the spotlights is 25 degrees. They're eight feet away from the center of the ball, so the beam spread does not exceed -- we know that uplighting is the concern here. And the beam spread does not exceed the diameter of the ball when it reaches the ball. Of course, the ball is kind of open through the middle, so a certain amount of light will pass through the ball towards the sky. The lights are 1,300 lumens apiece, so that's within the 8,000 lumen recommendation for decorative lighting. And those would be turning on at dusk and turning off at approximately 2:00 AM on time. And the objective for lighting is, of course, for viewers on the street to see the ball. So although uplighting is generally not recommended in the zoning code, even if we were to erect lighting poles to shine down on the ball, it wouldn't really achieve the objective of letting people on the streets see it. It's -- we're lighting it from the same angle as the viewers. And if we lit the top of it, it wouldn't be effective for lighting it at all. Because the spotlights are below the parapet wall, we believe there's no spill over to other properties. There's no spill over to the street. There's no way that someone to the street can actually see the lighting feature. There are two other aspects to the lighting scheme that we'd like to use, which is the ball has a full computer-controllable LED lighting system on it. We'd like to utilize that very briefly on the hour, like literally for 30 seconds at the top of each hour, to sort of make the ball wake up and sparkle a little green and blue with the LEDs. And then there are 24 strobe lights on the ball, which is a subset of what you -- if anyone saw it on New Year's Eve, this is approximately one-third of the number of strobes that were used on New Year's Eve. And those would sparkle for five seconds, just to mark the hour and sort of make the ball -- remind people throughout the year that it is a sort of a timepiece. It marks the time of the new year, but once an hour, it'll sparkle and it's sort of a sculptural effect. It's somewhat borrowed from what the Eiffel Tower does, which sparkles on the hour. So the LEDs are low voltage, power-efficient LEDs. The strobes are only four watts each, so it's, you know, less than 100 watts for all the strobes. And so the two aspects of lighting in summary are spotlights in the evening to shine up on the ball, and then an LED color and a strobe effect for a few seconds each hour is what we request. I can answer any questions?
Questions in the board? George?
Certainly other people. I do have to go first.
Could you say that the flickering on the hour is only going to be during darkness or all through the day in 24 hours?
I think, well, I think we'd like to have it do it all throughout the day. During the -- in the daytime, you wouldn't even be able to perceive the LEDs if they're not bright enough. And I'm not even sure if you'll perceive the strobe lights. We haven't really tested it. I'm sure it would by far be most noticeable in the evening.
We'll hear from the public later.
You had a couple of communications with the staff about this, and one of them was the follow-up on the size of the bulbs and whatnot. And then you also said they're on a photocell timer, which to me goes -- is different than being on a mechanical clock timer.
It's actually a combination of both. So we have a photocell to turn them on at dusk whenever dusk happens, so that we don't have to constantly reset the clock. And then there's a clock that turns it off at 2:00. So it's got both. The turning on is governed by darkness, the turning off is governed by time.
But the strobes turn off, but the LEDs will -- sorry, the spotlight turns off at 2:00 AM. The LEDs will continue the strobe on the hour.
That's what we'd like to do. We can set it to work out in any way. It's computer-controlled, so we can change that. But I think we would just let it sparkle every hour and all do it.
One of my concerns was the effect on light pollution. And it seems to me that it will contribute to that. Even if the spotlights just hit the glow, there's some transparency through the -- does anybody else worry about that kind of thing? I mean, that's the purpose of the lighting ordinance, apart from certainly to cut down the light pollution. Also, although I saw it lit at night before New Year's, I did not -- I've not seen the LEDs flashing. Has anybody else -- has anybody seen it? You have?
I didn't -- I mean, I think the lighting levels, I agree with the light pollution and letter of law because it's not solid, the light's going through, it's going to be coming up. But it is very non-threatening. It's very low-key.
How about the LEDs flashing?
They were festered in a harmless way, I would say. You know, there wasn't --
The fucking flashlight.
Yeah. By the time you appreciated them, it was over, that type of thing. I mean, I didn't have an issue with them at all.
George, I didn't get a chance to see them flashing. Would it be distracting at all to a car going by? You go ahead and whip up like that?
Not at all. I mean, you have to make an effort to look at it. And my only concern with this was not so much in this application would be if this is set up, if somebody else, based on the decision tonight, wants to put not a glow, but something else on their building with a little lighting and a clock or something. And then all of a sudden, we've got these things popping up all over town.
Well, certainly the setting a precedent is a problem in this case, I think.
Maybe one of you could explain to me exactly why this is a special, you know, it's a site plan approval.
Site plan approval, it's not a special permit.
Right.
Because we actually don't have anything in the lighting ordinance that allows unshielded lighting, and then so the LEDs would be considered unshielded because they're blinking up. But we also don't have anything that discusses LEDs because they've become more and more available since the ordinance was written. And then the other piece of it is the uplighting of that spotlight. That specifically says, it is covered in the ordinance that, in the board, it can only be allowed with site plan approval. So that's why the applicant is here. It is a case-by-case situation, so I don't know that, I don't necessarily, I wouldn't say that it would set a precedent if you're specifying the parameters about why you're approving this. If it meet, I mean, they're low wattage bulbs certainly, and the LEDs are efficient lighting and don't emit a lot of light at all. So, you know, those are sort of some of the parameters under which you might approve this, and it might be different for a different situation. Certainly other people might come forward and say, "I want a spotlight, you know, a sculpture that I'm going to put on my roof." But you look at that too, to see what the light levels are and what the timing is.
If we consider this ball a sign, what would the rule be about lighting a sign?
Well, there are maximum illumination levels for signs, and that's specified in the ordinance. And they're, the foot candles are much greater for, but it's signs based on different color schemes of the signs. So it's not, it probably would even, it wouldn't even meet the threshold, it would be less than a threshold for a sign in Central Business District.
That's just going to be some kind of framework. Catherine?
I'm just wondering what your thinking was in having this go year-round. I mean, it seems kind of special for like the holiday season. And I would think, I mean, this isn't a planning board question, but I would think that you would want to, that having something like this, it would be nice to have it for the holidays, otherwise people are going to get so sort of used to it, nobody's going to pay any attention to it anyway if it's out there all day, every day, all year long.
Well, I guess it's a very substantial, the structure is now much more substantial than it used to be, so to, well, so it's our request that, you know, we think we've created a nice-looking sculpture and we'd like to, we're requesting to leave it on display. And then our discussion here tonight is we're requesting to light it in the evening. So, you know, I think it's a, the zoning regulation does mention that, you know, this uplighting requires a site plan approval that says this may be appropriate for decorative purpose within neighborhoods of the Central Business District. So it becomes subjective, I suppose, but this, we feel like this is a, not only is this a sculpture, but it's a sculpture that's tied into something pretty closely connected with the identity of North Hampton, which is First Night. And the amount, I think that people, you have to be, happen to be glancing up there at the top of the hour to even know that it did anything. So I'm not, it doesn't seem to me that people will get tired of it. And the New Year's effect is considerably more dramatic. That's sort of just holiday lighting, so it's, we've been told by Tony Fratello that it's not, you know, that what, the lights that are on it for New Year's Eve are kind of not subject to generalized standards. I don't know if that's true, but, so the New Year's effect is much more rich colors for hours with the LEDs and three times as many strobe lights. So that's sort of how we differentiate.
I mean, it's still a sculpture up there, it's just going to be there for now on, and it's more of the issue of whether to light it all year long.
Right.
Yeah, I think most of us are more worried about the spotlights than the LEDs, but they're two separate issues. Go ahead.
I just want to confirm that, so it's staying up there regardless? This is just for lighting? But the intent is?
That's correct. There's a building permit in process, but assuming that we meet all the needs of the building inspector, then it will stay there.
Okay, if there's no other questions from the board, anyone from the public like to speak, please come up to the podium, identify yourself. Hope we shine. And your address?
I'm Lynn Allen. And do you want my permanent address or the address that I'm concerned about? We own property on Allen Place.
Okay, yes.
And the specific property that I'm most concerned about is number 12, because it has windows that face south if you look back at the hotel. I drove by several times, but was not able to see any lighting tonight. Is it lit now?
It is not lit now because our permits.
Okay, so I can't tell. Is it going to remain at the bottom of the pole?
Yes, and if you'll notice, the pole on which it rises on New Year's Eve has been removed. That pole is only in position for New Year's, and then that pole comes up.
I can see what looks like the top of some kind of pole and some kind of --
Yes, so now, actually, this pole is, it was trimmed since this picture was taken, but now you'll just, you would just see the ball and nothing even sticking out of the top of it. So that's, if you looked at it today, it would look sort of like this.
Okay, because I can see the top of some kind of post from the wall, but I can just see the top of the post. My concern is my tenants at night and that...
You should address your comments to the board. You can ask your questions.
That they would be bothered by lighting. Now, I've talked to my tenants, number 10. They don't have any south-facing windows. It's not a problem for them. I've not, I've alerted my other tenants, number 12. I haven't heard anything back from them, possibly reach them today. I'm no concern if it's not going to shine through the baby windows. Otherwise, it's a, you know, it's a lovely thing. But that's just my opinion.
So guess what, your home address for the record?
Is, for the record, is 62 East Taylor Hill Road, Montague?
Good enough. Thank you. You said there's three spotlights?
Yes.
Are any of them kind of facing the direction of Allen Place that you can think of?
I'm not exactly sure where Allen Place is. There are, there is, there are, I'm trying to remember exactly where the three lights are. There's one on the King Street side that shines sort of towards the west up on the ball, and then there are two on the sort of main street side that shine really sort of north, northeast or something like that on the ball. I think, so all of the lights are below, there's a wall around the roof of the hotel, this brick wall here. All the lights are below that?
Right. I don't think I see the lights themselves. It would just be what the effect of the illumination on the ball would be. It would see the ball. I'm not sure we are even going to see the ball.
We can't hear you.
From the north. I'm not sure that we can see the ball from the north. I don't see it now.
I don't think you can. And I think we removed the, there's a 24-foot post for pole for New Year's. We removed that on Tuesday. I think if you look now, you won't even --
You removed it on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, so when I was there last week, I saw the very top of that.
Right. So now, I don't know of any place from the ground that you can see the ball on the side, except for King Street and Main Street.
I'd say Allen Place is about 500 feet from where the ball is, probably.
It's right.
I don't know. It's just past the gas station, the two gas stations. And it goes off to the west, it goes off to King. You looking puzzled? Any other comments? Any other member of the public wish to speak? What do you want to do? I think, well, one of the questions, whether we allow the spotlights year-round or part of the time or at all. Another question is, what time of day should we allow the lights? And again, light pollution is a problem. I suppose there's a question whether we want the LEDs flashing all the time.
If you want what?
The LEDs flashing. I think we have pretty much total discretion in this.
George? I wonder if in this situation, because it's not a permanent, permanent structure, it's not a large cost involved, if we could provide like a provisional permit for a year and see if anything happened over time to traffic or the lighting that, you know, a distraction or creates any problem with people that think was. If after a year, the applicant comes back to us and we've heard no complaints and there hasn't been any issues, then we just continue.
Well, I would suggest that provisional period is three months. If there were no objections, then that would be continued for a year, and then be reconsidered. I mean, that would give us more time, I mean, that would minimize, we could make it 30 days if you wanted, but I thought three months might be a little compromise.
The only, I mean, when you're talking about something like that, then you're granting a permit, it's just, I mean, when you're talking about, I mean, I think that's a good approach, whatever the timing is you come up with, but just know that then you'll be granting a permit, and as expires at a date, the applicant would reapply, come back through the public hearing process, public hearing. So by adding, you know, something less than a year, that adds a little bit more burden to the applicant. Something, think about the other, you know, I'm just trying to think if there's another way, there's not really another way to do it except through a form of public hearing because you're granting the permit, and if you want to retract that, I mean, that would be through the public hearing process. So I guess I would recommend that if you're going to do it, it would, it should be probably a year or six months to a year, and then after six months, make a determination about if it's permanence or not, as opposed to doing, you know, increments up to a year.
So we ask them to come back?
Or you grant a permit that expires on X date, and then they come back to renew it in perpetuity, or, you know, if there are any issues that have come up, then maybe you could adjust it and renew it in perpetuity with some adjustments.
Well, say that for some reason, speaking in general, it became undesirable, they had a permit, is there any way you could go through another permit if it turns out to be a public nuisance? I'm not saying this in this case, but...
Well, not if it's changed from what you approved. I mean, if you granted on it, that would be the case if you granted it with an expiration date. Then it would be, then it's going to expire unless they come back and request, you know, it to be reconsidered. So, but you couldn't, once you've granted, if nothing, no conditions on the ground change, you've granted the permit as is, and then...
Comply to the permit, and there's no way of it.
Right, right.
Well, it's not exactly comparable, but I think I compare it to other lighting requests that we've had for things like gas stations, and there's no comparison. I mean, this is really, I saw it at New Year's, it was beautiful. It was not, I mean, it didn't jump out at you, and somebody else said, "I think you really have to be looking up to see it." It's spotlighting artwork by a local artist. I think it's a great thing, and I don't have any problems with it at all.
Yeah, I drove by a few times in the run-up to Christmas, but it, well, I didn't find it obnoxious or overbearing from there on the road. And I think I saw it with all the strip lights lit up, I guess I was New Year's Eve, earlier in the evening. You know, if it's coming on for 15, 20 seconds, I don't find that. If it was on all the time, then I would, I think that would be a little overbearing, but for a 15, 20 seconds of the hour, I wouldn't see that. You know, the issue is possibly the light pollution, I don't know enough for that to make a, you know, I don't have, I'm not an astronomer and stuff like that, I know those major issues and that. You know, the thought of spotlights later and up into the sky, I don't know what impacts those have enough to be overly concerned myself.
It's a lot like incremental traffic almost. And as was brought up earlier, if it sets a precedent, then someone else puts another sign or sculpture with uplighting, and we then keep going and going and going, then we have an issue with light pollution. But certainly the level of these lights just by themselves aren't going to create any kind of issue at all.
With spotlights, either?
Not at this level, no. The way they're, they're being deflected by all of the, also, you know, by the sphere itself. It's not like a beam that goes out in front of the car dealership when they're selling, having a sale.
You're not going to be selling cars.
It's so hard to get them up on the roof.
Talk to them here, they could do it. Okay, so the suggestion was that we grant a six-month permit?
Is there a way that we can grant it so that the applicant doesn't have to pay like the full amount to come back with the cover, the advertising fee or something like that? Is it like a...
They have a barrier.
No, but I mean, the fees for applying, there's fees for applying, I don't know what it was in this case.
Or is there something over the above that, just basic advertising, as you always...
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you could, I mean, if they're just coming back and there's no, I mean, you could set it up so with, you know, a public hearing to see if there have been any changes, but they don't necessarily have to, I mean, we could just advertise for the public hearing, and if there are any issues, then, you know, they'll have to submit these application forms and material or things like that, just to sort of check in. Yeah, we could minimize the amount of information they have to submit, the fees.
I'd like the six-month period because hours for more pedestrian traffic during the summer months and the better weather, so that people can see them and create a little fire.
Okay, so another consideration is what, is whether we should restrict the hours. Now it's from dusk till 2:00 AM. And it has been suggested that we restrict the hours, and also has been suggested that it only is allowed during the period of Thanksgiving and New Year's. Which fits in with the fested part.
Is that...
Say, don't you preach.
So any feeling, any strong feelings about that?
You pick 2:00 AM just because that's typically when all the pops are kicked out.
Yeah, it's very arbitrary, and we'll be happy to work with the board, you know. However, I don't think it makes too much difference what time.
Well, with that, to keep the string of people putting things on their roofs and lighting, then how are we going to do that? We could recognize the particular artistic merit of this sculpture.
So the spotlights stop at 2:00 AM, but the flicker, the LED flicker every hour goes on?
That's our current plan.
Unless we say no, which I think we could, we should probably.
I mean, I'm, this is just an opinion, I'd be more favor of just having it during the holiday season because it makes it so special. But, you know, I'm certainly which of her, what the board prefers. And I don't really have strong feeling about it, except it seems like it's a holiday thing that's, and that just the sculpture itself is attractive and just is there the rest of the time.
Marilyn?
That same thought occurred to me. However, I would say, you know, that's really a business decision. And, you know, I don't think, I would think that's up to them, whether they want to leave it year-round or have it just for the holidays. I personally think it detracts from the specialness of it, but, you know, we're used to it at the holiday time, so it's a business decision as far as I'm concerned.
I would, I would probably suggest that the flashing outlet lights end at 2:00, and maybe if you want them during the day, they maybe start at 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM, I don't know what that special time in the morning is. When do the traffic signals go for? When do the traffic signals go for blinking to active?
Well, it could, it could be auto cell activated before it gets light out.
Or what, no, I'm just.
I mean, if it, if it does, if it's still dark at 7:30 AM, I'm sure you won't.
Yeah, I just don't see the volume off after 2:00 AM of it flickering every hour. You know, it's a, it's a new year's when people are struggling about it at that time. Or after planning on being some.
My closing.
So I'd be in favor of letting it go as exactly as is proposed and see what response is in six months from now.
Well, whoever makes the motion.
Their motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Call it's public.
Wait, wait a second. Is there anyone else, any other comments in the public? Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's public. Okay, a discussion? All in favor? Let's see. We have to decide which, neither of the.
Well, I'm ready to vote, but I'm only taking, it doesn't count or whatever.
Neither of the alternatives have a vote.
Who won anyway?
Your comments are welcome. Okay, who wanted to make a proposal?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we grant the request by the Hotel North Hampton for site plan approval to all decorative unshielded lights to illuminate a sculpture at 36 King Street, North Hampton, with the condition that it run for six months and the applicant can come back to make a comment.
Can I just, do we have, should we add a, sorry, you want to say any discussion?
Go ahead.
Should we add some language here about possible reason why we're allowing this because it's a soft lighting that we don't feel will be detrimental to the light pollution levels?
Okay.
Would you?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to add that we also feel that it doesn't in any way fall into the category of advertisement or signage. Okay. You second that all? Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, scheduled for 7:20 PM is a request by Lee Goss for a special permit for frontage under 350.6.3 to create a single-family house lot at 40-day, 42 High Street, Florence, map ID 700C, date west 67, advertised on December 24th and December 31st. Mr. S.
Mr. S, the Governor of Hampton, I represent the applicant Lee Goss, he is here with me tonight. We actually prepared the application with the planning board's help. It's an application for lot size averaging and a special permit. And we have plans which show the proposed A and R plan and also drawn on a show of proposed location of the house. It's been reviewed by the planning department to meet the averaging, which in this neighborhood meant a lot of properties that had to be reviewed. I suggest to you that it meets the criteria that the planning board has often suggested to stop sprawl, infill our neighborhoods, and also to the objectives for sustainability by having a house located on a, what we refer to as a vacant lot, it's open space that's in city essentially because it's high street, it's close walking, the distance is long and centered. So if you'll notice on the plans, the house is aligned in terms of its frontage exactly with the existing structures there. And the way the driveway is set up is to take hand traffic to the back. If you also notice the accessory map or even the survey plan, it will show you that behind the house, the back line of butts into woodland and into the bike path. So the way it's been designed is the way I have often heard the board express is to keep the light shielded from other residences and properties. So it comes in on the same driveway that's presently used by the existing house and then turns and the parking area is proposed to be a budding to the neighbor's garage so that the light doesn't spill in any direction towards any other properties. The house that's designed there is suitably designed for the house, it's a small, compact structure. You have pictures underneath in the application of the proposed structure in the house. You also have the pictures of the existing neighborhood you haven't been able to get out to the site. So it meets the special part, permit criteria of promoting the city's objectives of infill, providing housing, being sustainable, and infilling existing properties. So I think the application is designed to meet your criteria, it does meet those criteria, and we'd ask your approval on the application as presented. I could answer questions, but Mr. Goss is also here to answer questions if you have questions.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have questions or? I think one, it seems to be a little low in there, have you taken any, is there water or problems in that area?
I don't think so. And I don't think so. I mean, basically you build houses, you know, like they, they plan for that kind of thing. I don't think there's any still updates in neighbor's garage or something like that. The breadth of, the level, I mean, it's pretty much leveled from there all the way across the, the next street.
Any other questions?
Kind of along the lines, because the plans show, you know, possibility of shared driveway. But the driveway, I guess that when I drove by it, I was surprised because the driveway is so much higher on the left on the lot that exists than the lot that's being added. And I, I don't know, I, I thought the same thing, it seemed very low. Was it possible to build a driveway with that steep up quality? So you could share the driveway. It's pretty steep. I don't know, just, it seemed, it would be, maybe, like you said, you can build it, it just seemed, uh.
Yeah, I think it only slows down ten to fifteen feet over that distance if they rated it, I don't think it'd be as significant.
You, you don't have any plan that would show elevation to the contour.
The photographs show the elevation, but we don't have contour plans, no, there are not contour plans. I'm sure if you're trying to set a house, you would, you would make some accommodation for how you construct it, but yes, if you'll see the house that's existing, which is the first picture on the piece, the foundation is raised quite high. Imagine a general up slope of the street. But the sway will run towards the rear of the property.
It's going to be more of a question for Carolyn, so whatever the board does tonight, assuming the board approves of the actual structure and as far as compatibility with the neighborhood, would be an issue for building inspector at the time?
No, no. That's, that would be under your jurisdiction now.
So I think. But we don't have a built, we don't have a plan at this point.
Right. So I think the issue is there was a, there was a sample house plan, but the, the way that it's written in the application is that the applicant is planning to sell the lot. So unless there's a guarantee that that plan will be constructed, you don't, you're not guaranteed necessarily that that's what would be built. So I think one of the issues that you could address either is to bring up the idea of an infill lot, but with the provision that an applicant has to come back, the end user has to come back for design approval of the structure if it's different than what's in front of you.
The other way, the other way of addressing that is with square footage in terms of the footprint, of course, the lot's still subject to zoning requirements. All you're doing is approving the lot, so you couldn't build too close to any particular size.
We're, we're not for a design control.
This issue though isn't about.
I'm well aware of that.
The issue isn't about the size and the footprint because there are setbacks. The issue is fitting into the character of the neighborhood and both the sustainability plan and the zoning specifically say that for a special permit, that design and compatibility with the neighborhood is a criteria of polish you would use such.
So we don't have a problem with that condition. I, I think it is right, the house that if Mr. Goss was going to be the developer, would is the one that's presented and if the condition were to suggest that it be substantially similar in design, otherwise it has to come back through the review of the design. I don't have a problem with that condition.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Now, there's four different.
Application, really?
Yeah, there's three different houses, I just picked ones that, that don't match the neighborhood. I mean, my desire is not to have someone building a mansion or anything like that, they're going to be.
We live next door.
Yeah. I, I want, I want a nice, small, single-family home that's affordable and I think that's what those are.
So you could, you could either pick the range or you could pick one that the board prefers and use the same language of substantially similar.
Square footage is critical.
Right. It's really the design, the exterior style.
That's why, that's why you have, that's why you have the plans.
And if we say substantially similar than the other, building inspector, building.
You could make, you could specify that it's OPD or OPD with a board member, you've done that before.
Certainly. Well, let's hear it for the public. This may not be all, all roses. Please stand up and come up.
My name's, my name's Dawn Honer and I live at fifty, I have the house 50 and 52 High Street and it, I'm the lowest house on the street and there, there are water issues. The only drainage system there is, is in the driveway of 50 High Street and that backs up a lot. So water is a, a big issue for me, especially with the mosquitoes and there are no curb cuts that, that come down from Chestnut Street to my property, so I get all the water from Chestnut Street and also in the other direction.
Are you talking about water on the roadway or in your property?
From the roadway and also from melting snow, everything goes in my yard.
Put in a condition that what runoff from the lot can't go into the road, couldn't we?
Yeah, but his house is situated, the, the, the property is situated above, it's, it's his property and then Michael Thorpe's property and then my property and it slows down, so all of that runoff, if there's not green space, it's not going to be absorbed. That, that's my concern.
Well, doesn't the ordinance, the ordinance allow water to run up into the street anyway?
Right. But, or, I mean.
Or the neighborhood property or that, yeah.
You can't, you can't change existing drainage patterns that, that create a problem for, you know, other, for surrounding neighbors. If there's a, you know, if there's an existing drainage pattern with the lay of the land, that's not going to change, but you can't redirect the topography in a way that would increase or redirect drainage in an off-site and if, so you have to contain the water on-site.
They're going to add to the impervious, they're going to increase the runoff, you know, from where the footprint of the house is and where the driveway is.
Right, but that could be maintained on-site, doesn't necessarily have to run off, but the natural.
Should, should you do, yeah.
Right, so for the footprint that's created, you know, you could emphasize the criteria in the, in the ordinances that, you know, for that addition, for that roof drainage, the roof drainage and the driveway drainage has to be maintained on-site. The runoff from the back of the yard or anywhere else that's there now would presumably continue if it is in fact the case.
Well, who would renew that? Who would see to it that the design was needed was actually implemented?
Well, you could direct, I mean, the building department, you could say the roof leaders need to be directed into, you know, dry well or something on the site.
Did you, did you have any other issues besides this water issue?
Well, the water issue is a very big issue for me and Michael Thorpe could not be here tonight, he is, he's an abutting neighbor and he has sent you a letter.
Okay, I, I'll read the letter now. Dear sirs, at North Hampton Public Meeting, January 8, 2009, my neighbor Lee Goss is requesting a special permit for a frontage requirement under 350.6.3 to create a single-family house lot at 42 to 42 High Street, Florence. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the meeting due to work commitments out of state. On the other hand, I am the one that was most affected since the house will be squeezed in right next to my house and I'm not happy about that. I think frontage rules are there for a reason, to avoid congestion. I'm sure that my neighbor has very compelling reasons and it is very awkward for me to go against it, that when first the new house is there, is there to stay, be sold, et cetera, and I don't think it is in the interest of the community to have these frontage rules broken. Thus, I am against giving the permit. Dear sincerely, Michael Thorpe, 48 High Street, Florence. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
Good evening, Mr. Johnson, board. My name is Julie Klein. My husband, Mark Najin, and I live at 47 High Street, we're a pink corner from the lot. We've lived there for twenty-two years. I have seen the patterns of where the water goes before that driveway was put in and after that driveway was put in. And there is no standing water. If there's any water issue at all in that neighborhood, it's on my side of the street, which is much lower and we have a high groundwater level. I'm not, never seen any water issue on that side of the street. That said, I'm here in support of Mr. Goss's application. While we regret the loss of the green space, we understand, and I'm speaking, my husband authorized me by way to speak for him, we understand and accept the, the overall objective of the, of the planning board to control growth in the city, understand the infill issues. But my question was, I, I first had a question, as I, you know, a number of neighbors did, about the style of the house and my concern is, and I wondered, if, if the lot's being sold, then the control of the style, it becomes an issue. We, we're not allowed to be as neighbors to make, to pick the, the style of the house. However, this issue has come up other times in the past while I've lived in that neighborhood and we generally had builders agree to build in such a way that is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. It's been fairly effective. The fact that the lot's going to be sold and I don't know whether the person who buys it is going to build on spec or whether they're going to go for themselves or whatever is, is, is a concern for me. The other issue that I would like to address is whether the board would be willing, and I've had a conversation with, with Councilor Edridge about this, would be willing to require that there be a single-family dwelling deed restriction put after the deed. Mr. S has just told me that he's not proposed to that. I know there are terms, the board orders such a restriction, but my husband, who is the convener in the family, has said that that doesn't always make its way into the deed. The other question I have is what would be the availability to the new owner and builder of the house with regard to adding an accessory apartment? And my scroll through the zoning bylaws today didn't, didn't turn out for me a really definitive answer to that. Accessory apartments are allowed by, now of course, in, in URB, which is what our zone is, but on this small, smaller infill lot, what happens with, are they, is someone allowed to come in for its official permit? How would that work?
I'll answer that. The zoning allows, any single-family home, an accessory apartment is allowed by right, but this is a special permit request. The board does have the jurisdiction to say that no accessory apartments would be allowed as a condition of the permit if you chose to do that. The issue about whether or not a, with a single-family house could be built, this is a request for dimensional averaging to allow the frontage for a single-family house lot and then URB, the frontage requirements for a two-family is greater, so this is really just a permit for a single-family house. So nothing more than a single-family house would be allowed and if conditioned, even within that, you could restrict the ability to create an accessory apartment if you chose to do that.
I'm not necessarily opposed to an accessory apartment, I'm just interested in what the, what the zoning bylaws. I'm just interested in what the, what the zoning bylaws allow. We're, we're all, we're always concerned about traffic and, and density. And, um, I know that that's an argument that's made by many people in many neighborhoods. That lot is already supporting a, a, a two-family property. So there is, although their, their traffic, I'm not saying Mr. Goss is, is, is very light and very polite. So I'm not worried about the traffic from, from his home. I just want to keep down a number of cars. We welcome, I, as a matter of fact, I welcome the development up on Garfield Avenue. And I know the folks up there expressed some concern about the traffic. We've got Garfield Avenue traffic, we've got Middlebrook traffic, we've got all the trucks who are avoiding downtown. So High Street is not a lovely, quiet residential street. It's a very, very busy street with a lot of vehicles on it. So that's, we're also, I'm, are concerned with that as well.
What was your first concern that you were worried about?
The design. The, the design. And I've, and I've talked to a couple of other neighbors who have expressed, um, Shelby Michana, who lives down the street, works for the rent department, told me that, that the, the design was of interest to her as well. Um, I'm not saying that anyone has to put a Victorian-style house. There are a number of styles of houses in the neighborhood. A ranch, um, I can, might make people a little uncomfortable. And I'm also wondering if, if we do go with, if there is a decision made about the, um, the single-family dwelling and, and the design, what's the enforcement there? Is that, again, is that building inspectors, human forces, that? What do I do if I look across the street and someone's built a beauty parlor there? You laugh, you laugh, it happens.
That would be an enforcement in any structure on the street if, you know, in a residential district.
Be the finding, not that would be the, the building inspector.
Building inspector.
Okay.
The other question I have, um, that is a lot, there used to be some beautiful trees there, and they were cut down, and there were no trees in that side of the lot at all. I'm wondering if there's any way that we could request politely that, that, uh, some vegetation be considered in, in that area.
It's covered by the street trees.
That's not a major difficulty.
Yeah, but it's a special permit, so you can have that as a condition.
Sounds good to me. I'm all in favor, thank you Julie.
Thank you very much, Randy.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Hello?
Hi. Dave Rackow, and I live on forty-five High Street, immediately, uh, the opposite side of the, the street. Lee Goss, I'm here with my wife, Kathy Wana. And just like to say that I, I pretty much echo what Julie just said. And we are definitely in, in favor of infill. We live in a house that exists because it was an infill construction. We are concerned about the appearance of whatever is constructed there, but we very much like the designs that Lee's presented. And so our, our, our real concern is just that there is a problem with low water, as Julie said, on the other side of the street. But I, I really am not too concerned about, um, construction here and additional impervious surface having too much of an impact there. So, um, really just voicing my, my support of all this and my encouragement that we, we do something in the way of a special permit that requires the purchaser of the land and whoever is constructing a, a building on that land conform to, as you've said, the, the designs or come back to the board if they decide to go with another design. So, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. My name's Gary Warden. And I live at ninety-one Chestnut Street, which is just around the corner from the potter. And I guess I'm not one for infill. I lived in the neighborhood for over forty years, and the rare things houses I've been into. And my opinion is, if you don't like the lot, come by the house. Come by.
Anyone else like to comment on our High Street proposal? Do we have enough information? I'm wearing a position that says reasonable, but that's in a difference, uh, restriction.
Um, just wanted to add, GPW didn't have any comments.
I just want to confirm what, what Julie said, was that we don't have a problem with the deed restriction. I did explain that the special permit goes on record and goes in everybody's feet, but if you want to add the layer of having a deed restriction, we don't have a problem with that, whatever your preference is.
Which deed restriction is that?
Pardon?
No.
Accessory apartment.
Single-family, no accessory apartment.
Right, right. I mean, of course, you know, you put a deed restriction, this is something you do find from now on. You have a problem down the road because you can't change that. You can change the restrictions. And people would have to come to you to change them. But if you put a deed restriction in, it can never change. But your preference.
Accessory apartments, that they're restricted in size, and then who occupies it has, it can become a rental property.
An owner has to live on the property. They can't see nine hundred square feet. Um, the entrances can't be facing front, so.
So was it, the restrictions on who lives in the accessory?
Um, not who lives in the accessory, the owner has to live either in the accessory or the principal structure of the property.
It could come a two-family, but that's what.
You know, any house in town.
No, but I'm just.
Right, except for two families don't have the same restrictions.
No, I understand.
And there's a maximum, actually, there's a maximum for three people who could live in this area.
And also, excuse me, if you had a garage, if there was a detached garage, you couldn't add a detached accessory structure.
That's by special permit. You could have a potentially detached accessory apartment if you met other criteria, but it's not by right, whereas if you, if it's part of the principal structure, so it's attached in some way, or if it's incorporated into the main house, then you don't need any additional hearings or special permits. But if you're proposing to do a structure, an apartment in a detached structure, then that would require a permit from the zoning board to deal with.
Does everything come to play with a shared driveway in that case? Because in the shared driveway, only three units?
No, a shared driveway is allowed for up to three lots.
Three lots.
Right. So, I mean, the other issue about the common driveways being proposed here, but the details of the common driveway aren't shown, so, um, I would suggest that you would require an ad build to hear if they're showing that the driver performs the common driveway standards. And, um, there's also an issue raised about congestion. There is a requirement that the applicant meet, um, the traffic mitigation is part of the special permit site plan, um, which has been typically for infill sites, a thousand dollars per minute. So you could look at that as part of the, um, prior certificate of occupancy, which is typically done. And then you brought up the issue of the garage. I think that's also important in terms of the design. Where the garage is located, is it attached, is it detached?
I noticed that there's some mature evergreens up the site. I guess that'd be the west side, but there's sort of like a missing, it was like a, would it, since the, I don't know, have you had a conversation with the abbotter about, you know, landscaping the shield or, you know, like, the trees?
Um, I, I, I wanted to talk to him, but he works in New York City, and I just haven't been in touch with him. He usually comes in on the weekends. Those trees are like right on our line.
They're yours or?
They're past ours.
I'm just curious.
The line goes right up the center of the trees.
Just wondering, curious if it's worth putting a condition that.
Giant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That they plant, plant something in that space of the abbotter, which is, I don't know, is a requirement to, to shield.
No, when it's comparable uses. I mean, they're all residential uses, so. But you may want to address, there was an issue about trees that you know, but you may want to do about shade trees, and, you know, um, as opposed to buffer trees.
Well, would you like to see those trees preserved? Because they're not owned by either.
I was just curious, since the abbotter wasn't here, it's some, just something to think about, you know, because I saw like a missing. With that shield there, it's basically, there's no reason to see the house, right?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I was just thinking, would it be, you know, that those trees can't be taken down as part of construction? You want to restrict that, or is that?
I, I think Michael would, I, as his friend and his neighbor, I can say he would be very unhappy if those trees were cut down for construction.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them removed.
Yeah.
Ms. Kling, would you have a comment?
Well, I'd like to respond to Counselor Effler's concern about the permanency into eternity of the deed restriction. I understand and appreciate that. And I've actually thought of that, what if the zoning of the area changes and it suddenly becomes general business, or something happens in, in the future? Wouldn't want to force someone to have, have a single-family dwelling surrounded by commercial buildings. So perhaps we could compromise and say something to the effect of, so long as the immediate, this area is zoned residential, I'm, I, I think there's some, maybe a way to play with the language there. I'm not precisely sure about that. I would also make the comment that, um, my, my neighbor Michael across the street is very rarely home, so I'm a little surprised that he's expressed concern about the house there. I know that that shouldn't really have a big impact on, on your decision, but he is very, he is very rarely there.
It has an impact on, on the value of his home, as you say, but.
Okay.
And the privacy of the house.
Would the public hear?
I'll take the motion to pause for a minute.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Special conditions?
Um, prior issuance of the building permit, the applicant must submit plans showing the structure that is substantially similar to one of those submitted, um, and to be reviewed by OPD staff and a board member or OPD staff. So that's out there to decide. That, uh, a garage, surely it'll be detached or attached, should be located behind the single-family house and not visible in the street. Prior issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit a payment in lieu of traffic mitigation, a thousand dollars, paid in the city of North Hampton. Prior issuance of a CO, the applicant shall submit an ad build of the common driveway showing full compliance with the standards and attachment one and designing order for common driveways. And then the two others to consider about roof runoff, being directed in a dry well on-site, I mean, for both sides of the concern that maybe there is an issue, maybe there isn't. And then a deed restrict, or, um, that a single-family house is permitted with no accessory apartment. And then the other piece of that would be, do you want that also to be recorded as part of the deed restriction, not just the permission? And then trees, um, if you have any issue about, um, requiring shade trees.
It seems to make street trees would be desirable, is that how we shout at it?
What's the frontage fifty-five and forty-one, the paddy street? So that's.
I may be mistaken, you'd better laugh and speak up. I don't think there's sidewalks on either side of the street.
We've already closed a couple.
Oh, okay. Okay, it doesn't fit in with, there aren't a lot of street trees that are, um, centuries. Sorry, fifty-one.
I don't think that's one.
So with the structure review, do we want a board member to be, do we want a structure review with planning? A four member or a, a number of four members?
Your vice chair. Works for me. Yeah, I think there should be some.
The chair on this table, this thing. Runoff issue with the dry well, um, should require a dry well or a solution to the problem that would be up to the applicant, probably doing this on.
Well, it's not clear what the problem, what the extent of the problem is, so.
Can we not just say all, all runoff must be shown to be contained on-site?
We don't know if the exact issue is part of the mandate or the answer.
As part of, as part of the building permit or?
Right, that would be shown as part of the building permit, that, that.
Yeah.
Right, all runoff should be contained on-site.
Regulars, both.
Well, as far as accessory apartment, I could a little bit funny about making an exception to this one law. If it's granted by rights, and most areas, then I think it should be. If it's not granted by rights, then they should come in front of us and ask for the special permit.
This is a special case.
The, uh, the nature of the neighborhood, though, I mean, other houses down this street could also have accessory apartments by rank currently, which are, it's closely, it's pretty dense neighborhood. It's a special case because it's a slightly smaller lot that we're allowing for frontage.
Well, it's not the lot, it's just the width of the lot. And so by, by definition in the ordinance, this is at least the median of all the other lot widths for single-family houses in the district.
It's not out of character.
Right, and that's the purpose of the request for the special permit, is to show that this is similar to at least, um, you know, half of the structures we have created.
The new lot would be twelve thousand seven hundred ninety feet square.
Don't be a lunatic in lot size, Adam.
Oh, see, no.
Yes, no.
If this were.
We wouldn't be here.
If this were URC, that would be allowed.
No, frontage is the same in URC. It's frontage, it's not lot size. It's much bigger. Square footage, minimum square footage for a single-family house in urban residential B is eight thousand square feet. For a two-family is twelve thousand square feet. So the only thing that's, that's, is the frontage that is the purpose of the, the application.
Okay, it does, I mean, I think I agree with you, which does seem odd to restrict something that by right, everybody else in the city can view. It does, it's.
Currently, there are a number of two-family houses down this street and within that area of Florence, which are be larger family and a larger dwellings than an accessory apartment. So I understand that the neighbors concerned with not adding more traffic and all, but I just don't think this merits kind of putting a rider on that subject.
It's a special permit, it's four, right? On the other hand, I don't really care.
Yeah, I just didn't hear that much from the abutters about this being like a super important piece of, I think, I don't think there's any reason to overstep and to, to put the deed restriction on this panel. I don't, I'm hearing.
Well, I think there's a difference, there's the deed restriction to make in single-family, but even with that deed restriction, you can still, I think by rights, still add.
If you didn't have, if you didn't restrict it by right, any single-family house in North Hampton can add an accessory apartment, because there's specific criteria for accessory apartment that limit, the type, the number of people, the, the size, the ownership.
But if we put in the deed, it has to be a single-family house, that excludes under building and.
Well, unless you said the deed with a single-family house with no accessory apartment.
Just because no neighbor appeared to object to it doesn't mean we can't consider it.
Oh, I realize that, I just, I don't.
Neighbors might not show up at all, doesn't mean we can approve anything.
I don't see the need for it. And I think that, what I, I think what I understand is that the permit as requested is the, the structure of it is only for a single family. So if anyone wants to put a two-family, they have to come here first anyway, so it seems to be different.
Accessory apartment doesn't make it a two-family?
I'm on to the other topic.
She should question what Steve was saying.
So I, I think that that's redundant to put the deed restriction to be a single-family house, if I'm understanding that properly.
A, a two-family requires more frontage than a single-family.
So somebody would need to come back if they chose to do it, is that enough?
The only reason to do it is if under rezoning discussions, we decide a two-family can have 65 feet of frontage, then it has the lot size area. So that would be the only argument to make it continue to be single-family, but then we would be going through those discussions as part of the zoning, so.
But then the existing frontage, as it is now, would be the criteria anyway, it wouldn't need this other thing.
Yeah, so. I think if we're going for infill, I'm sorry, you know, I don't think we're overburdening this, this lot or this street by approving it as a single-family and whatever subsequent structures that can be built as a single-family, is my take.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that the only thing? About the tree, you said the tree? Driveway as-built? Fine.
Yep, design, as-built, uh, traffic mitigation, roof front.
To accept the $1,000 of any roof traffic.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Well done. Do you want to just review the, review this?
Go ahead.
Design review by planning board chair and OPD, your chairs designated. An as-built for the common driveway standards, um, traffic mitigation, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, and roof runoff to be contained on the site, and two shade trees along the street front.
Yeah, exactly.
And a, for a.
How about roof and driveway? And then what about the shared driveway as, as part?
That's part of the as-built.
But don't they need like a easement or something like that? This won't be.
Right, but that's part of those standards that are spelled out specifically in that.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to allow the request of annual docs for special permit for frontage reduction under 350.6.3 to create a single-family house lot at 4042 High Street, Florence, ID 17C-267, with the conditions appearing.
Second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Good, see, good.
So, yeah, I just practiced over the, but I'm not recording here. But unless we want multiple cameras, it seems like I have not processed this, the one stream.
Bridge.
Yeah, doing this, that would be the next law order, get a relief, different.
So, there was a woman here earlier named Amy, and she asked me, she said she spoke on the 18th meeting here on the 18th. She was wondering if there was a way that we could take a copy and give her. All of this stuff on the 18th.
Yeah, in fact, I, I have, it's ready to, I'll put it up tomorrow on the internet, so I can take that.
All right. I don't know, last time she gave me her deon dress, so. Kind of older, she has glasses. I've seen her at some of those, which might, all the best practices, I've seen her. But I, I can tell her that they're, they're going to be on for the long run. Yeah. I guess her room.
We should. What happened?
That's because there was no land that's operationally.
And just give away. I know, I should have given the way to somebody before I read them, I should have given them. I still, um, want you later.
You can go a thousand feet.
Yeah. I kept that.
I'm a month away from buying.
Because I, I want to know if I should see.
I just sold three and a half miles. Really, 20,000 foot.
I'll go through it.
You guys start.
I'm making trouble, plus I made public officials.
All right, let's, uh, you guys ready? Mr. Barnes, he's ready. Don't touch. I'd like to open a joint meeting of the Planning Board City Council Ordinance Committee. Call a hearing on four proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Scheduled for 8:00 PM, advertised December 24th, December 31st. Number one, improve parking and driveway standards to allow residential driveway access over the side lot lines and allow new technologies for parking lot services. Correct scribblers' error in tables. Number two, simplify zero lot line development to eliminate fences, reduce 30-foot side setback to 15 feet, and allow lots next to non-zero lot project. Amend site plan, number three, amend site plan submission requirements to specify traffic mitigation payment in lieu of standards and require construction materials for sites to be comparable to those required in subdivisions. Number four, zoning map change for the parcels of 296 Non- Truck Street, map ID 22B-Days43, from general industrial to special industrial. Mr. Craig?
Your pleasure, you want to go through these one at a time, you can comment for each one, or are you going to do all four?
I think we should take them separately, there's so different.
Okay.
Agree with that?
Right. No, I agree, but just to clarify, so the planning board may vote on these, yea or nay, but the ordinance committee, as is the wanters, they may not at this point have. This joint hearing, this joint hearing is a.
There's a joint hearing, but we did not advertise as a ordinance committee meeting. So they will take off the item at presumably the next meeting. Occasionally, when something's either timely or incredibly minor, we're actually advertising this joint meeting that they couldn't vote for.
We could vote on.
And your vote would be a recommendation to City Council. City Council.
And for the record, our next posted meeting is Monday.
Okay, Monday, January, something around that. 6:00 PM in this room.
Okay, so let me walk you through them. There's a package I passed out to all of you, and the audience has extra copies, if anyone didn't get any, the audience. It has every, it has a cover memo for each of its own changes and go through. It has copies of all the ordinances, except I neglected to put up a really tiny one, the correcting the scribblers' error. So there's a cover memo that talks about that, but doesn't actually show it to you, I can tell you what that changes. So, um, let me go through them first. The first one is this correcting the scribblers' error. You don't have it unless you have it for the last mail you got, but we have a table of parking requirements. The parking requirement says, here's a number of parking spaces you need for a bar, here's we need for an office building, here's we need for housing. At the very end of the table, it says, all uses not covered by the above, the building inspector figures out what use is closest. Except, it actually says, all uses covered by the above, the building inspector figure out what was closest. And so that not gives me a second, we just need to put it back in. It was an earlier ordinance we meant to the table, trying to make a typo. So that's just scribblers. The more substantive piece, Karen, do you want to do the, the first part, the driveway, because you're more experienced in that?
Very complicated. We, um, you know, this is really just to make things easier for, in particular, specifically residential applicants, either those proposing a single-family house lots, or if they have a single-family or residential house lot. Just, uh, we require a driveway currently to come across the front lot line unless there's a permit granted by the planning board. And, um, there have been situations that, that we know of, just at a snack level, where residents want to change the location of their driveway because it, it's more, makes more sense to come off from a side street or, you know, if they back onto an alley or another street in the rear. But the process of going through the planning board hearing is onerous, and so they end up not doing it. And we're, um, I think this would clarify the reasons in which someone could have a driveway other than coming off the, across the front lot line. So, um, the issue here was right during this discussion about whether we should change this and allow it to be by right for residential uses only. Commercial uses would continue to need approval by the planning board as they were coming across other lot lines. And, in fact, this only allows the driveway to come from a street. You still, you can't cross someone else's property to get to your property under this chain, which is, which would require approval if you were trying to do that. So this is directly from the street. But we've discussed whether it makes sense to have DPW take over the review of this by right situation, because there's ones that grant curtsies anyway. We've made initial contact with DPW, but hopefully by the time this gets to City Council, we'll have a better idea about whether DPW feels comfortable taking over this aspect of it. It's always been out of the planning board jurisdiction, but given what DPW does, it might make sense just to have to review these.
Here's, um, two recommendations from the Sustainable Hampton Plan, which are relevant to this. Economy Development Call Four calls generally for streamlining permit process, not giving way to store, but where we can streamline things to make it clearer, we try to. And then the appendix A, the appendix A, which talks about things to be considered. If you remember the plan itself, the goals and the objectives are basically formal plan. There's appendix, which are things for for formal discussion, which haven't yet, is not a recommendation for it. And so besides the streamlining, which is the plan itself, there's two recommendations in appendix, which talk about this very thing, or the things which currently require site plan approval, which potentially be approved by staff.
There was a case on the corner of Bright and State Street with an ideal example of this, I mean, they had a parking space in the front that they built a garage and changed their entrance, eliminated that curb, changed entrance to Bright Street. It was an improvement, but it seems to me this only applies to corner lots or the lots that go through from one street to another.
It, it doesn't apply to many, but practical, generally, it's hard to know always, the planning board is called DPW's advice. And so our feeling is, if in fact, you're just implementing what DPW's recommending, then that is a perfect infrastructure step.
Is this, is there other measure, and guess under the current permit, DPW has a right to deny a curb cut based on their determination? So it's not like taking away, the fact that it's not a permanent process doesn't take away their right to, to deny a curb cut?
That's right. And this would be giving them the right, I don't know the regulations that they usually curb cut under, but even if there's not enough teeth there, this will give them additional teeth. They may want to revisit those regulations.
Seems like we're not, not the end of it, but it seems like we're not increasing workloads for them because they would be reviewing these plans anyway and giving us comments, so.
And, and I think our recommendation is, if DPW is willing to take the role, then we recommend you strike where it says, planning office in here and replace DPW. If DPW isn't willing to take the role, then planning staff is happy to do that. And, you know, we, we figured that out by time comes back.
I mean, just, uh, this may be overkill, but if now applications come to the planning board, DPW reviews it as part of the site plan approval process, but then the applicant still has to go back to DPW for the actual curb cut permit. So then at that point, DPW's seen it twice.
Can you help the public? Any ones in the public care to comment just on suggestion number one, improve parking and driveway standard and correct scribblers' error in the comments in the public? Okay, just move on. Do we act on these individual? I think we just act on it as it is. I'll make a motion that we recommend the changes to the parking. Do we need to close the public hearing on this? No, we'll close the public hearing. Go ahead. I don't know, that's a good question. Do we close the public hearing on this?
You've traditionally done this at the beginning, so much. You've traditionally waited to, to all the public hearings.
Yeah, I guess we better get some more concrete. Okay, next.
Okay, so the next one is, is zero lot line development and.
No, what about parking lot materials?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's actually, uh, so parking lot materials is part of the same piece. So parking lot materials, this is a transition. So in the Sustainable Hampton, it says, we should be examining the opportunity for permeable pavement. The idea of permeable pavement is right now, when you have most, the only pavement that's allowed under zoning is asphalt, what we call asphalt concrete and cement concrete. They basically are 99% impermeable. That is, when it rains, all the water leaves them. There are materials which are more permeable, let water flow down to the ground. They're all have major flaws, some is difficult for snow plowing, some as soon as it gets sand covered, doesn't work as well. So there's limits to them, and we definitely want to explore them. But right now, if an applicant says, I'd like to try permeable, it works very well for simple family common driveway, or they work well for overflow parking, because they don't get a lot of use. Technically, that is only in Hampton. So this wouldn't be mandating it, it just says, the allowable pavement materials are cement concrete, asphalt concrete, and permeable pavement. If it works, five years from now, we may come back and say, why don't we require this? It's just a common sense.
Any more to this, uh, number one? Okay, move on to number two.
Okay, so, um, two is the zero lot line development. Karen, do you want to start, because there's more and I can finish.
We currently allow zero lot line projects in the urban residential B and urban residential C district. And also as part of a cluster development, so a bigger cluster project might come in, someone proposes single-family homes, and they could do a configuration of zero lot line. Zero lot line is really about the way the structures are configured on the parcel. And zero lot line needs zero setback, side setback on the. And zero lot line needs zero setback, side setback on one upside setback. So a lot obviously has a front, a rear, two sides typically. So in this configuration, what we allow currently under zoning is that you can put, you can, if you're, if you own a piece of land, you can create, if you have the right frontage and lot size, you can create two lots. And the interiors division, lot division between this proposed structures could be a setback from structure zero feet anywhere up to fifteen feet, which is standard side setback. So you could have structures that are contiguous or abutting and with fire separation and all of that. We originally, this ordinance came into the, I guess, it's around two thousand, I think was the, was the time, oh, two thousand and one. Because there had been an interest in creating, instead of having a condominium where you share a lot and you share the structure, common walls, people actually wanted to own their own lot. So if you had a two-family, you would create a property line down the middle of the two units so that there could be land ownership that went along with the structure. So this enabled that situation. With the current zoning and zero lot line, instead of a seventy-five foot of frontage for a single family house, the frontage requirement was reduced down to sixty-five per single family house lot, so seventy-five. Since the ordinance was adopted, there haven't been that many, if any, I can't think of any requests to create zero lot line projects where the houses abut and the property line goes down the center of the structure. In fact, people have used it to reduce the frontage requirement for single family homes, but keep the homes separated up to fifteen feet apart even. But it was really a way to create additional lots here and there with less frontage. The requirement currently requires that the opposite side setback that's not shared with that zero lot line be thirty feet. So that's twice what all the other structures or lots in the district require. The standard is fifteen feet on both sides, but for zero lot line, it's thirty feet on the side that abuts a neighbor that has no relationship to the zero lot line. So there have been some instances where people have come forward to request zero lot line development and they don't qualify because they don't meet the thirty-foot side setback, they need everything else, but they don't quite have thirty feet. And so the, we've had internal discussions about the reason why you would have double the side setback of everybody else in the district. So essentially, this, the primary change to this would be to, one of the primary changes would be to reduce that thirty-foot opposite side setback to fifteen, to be consistent with all the other structures in the district. And this, the other criteria in the zero lot line require that there be a fence between the zero lot line side of the structure, unless the planning board approved the elimination of that fence. And again, because the developer is creating both these lots, many times they're separating the structures and a fence isn't really necessary. So that forces the applicant to come to the planning board just to say they don't want, you know, a fence between the two structures. And then the other piece of that is, the design aspect that was included in the original ordinance talks about windows not being allowed on the side where there's that share, potentially shares party wall. Again, the way that the zero lot line has been used to date, the structures have been separated and it doesn't make much sense if the developer is creating a design that will work for him or her, why the city would control where windows are located on a building if that applicant really wanted to put windows on that side. So this would eliminate that restriction of windows on that side. And then the other aspect of this change would be to allow zero lot line to, a project to be next to a non-zero lot line property if there was, if the abutter agreed and signed essentially an agreement that would be recorded through registry of deeds on how the structure was designed. So then it becomes, again, it sort of allows potentially additional, some amount of additional units in neighborhoods, provided that there was no opposition from the immediate abutters.
The last point, right now, someone can do the same thing, they just have to do, make it basically expensive for them. If my neighbor and I agreed that I could build my house after property boundary and we have good lawyers and it was comfortable, my neighbor can sell me his property for a dollar. I could get a permit to build my house after property boundary and then sell my neighbor back their house for a dollar. So there is this, this way around it. So in essence, we're saying, if you own those properties, you can do this and then you can sell it later. And the idea was basically mimic a process, the neighbor has to agree, they have to easement, they have to report it directly. One of the questions that came up the planning board and upon the community is, how many properties are likely to be affected by it? And so there's an assessment that's here, there's a map in, at the third page, the memo. Before you take out a magnifying glass, we can zoom in on it. What it shows, this is sort of a GIS analysis, this is a analysis from five thousand feet up. It's not completely accurate. It's accurate to give you a sense of the order of magnitude, of how many properties are there, but it's not going to be completely accurate. So what the map shows is, we queried, we did a few different queries. The first is, what freestand, some people own double lots, in essence, two deeds for two lots. And if you, if you own one lot by itself, you don't own any surrounding property, even if that lot doesn't meet zoning right now, most likely it's grandfathered, in most cases grandfathered, and you can build that lot anyway. So we didn't care about those lots. Because those vacant lots around town that are grandfathered or grandfathered someone could build. So one of the questions we asked is, if I own two lots and the second lot has less than seventy-five feet of frontage, which is the frontage requirement in U R B and U R C, which the only districts we deal with, but has more than sixty-five feet of frontage, and that lot complies with minimum lot size and doesn't have a house on it, tell me how many of those there are? These are potentially people who own double lots where that lot is potentially built. The number is going to be less than shown on the map, because when I don't have, I can't do this, it's not automated, is if I own a double lot, it potentially is possible that my house is actually in the middle of the lot line and I couldn't carve off one lot, I don't have a way of doing it. The other question we asked is, if I have a really big lot, if I have, for example, a hundred and forty-five feet of frontage with a house on it, my lot is bigger than a typical single family home, thirty-five feet, but less than two single family homes, a hundred and fifty feet. So we also tried to analyze that. Again, we're going to overcount, because we don't know how many houses are in there. We're assuming for this analysis that the house is snugly on one side of the property, unless you park it. Obviously ignoring the market. So it's a significant number of units, but not, you know, a couple dozen units, so it's not huge. The piece that's potentially much bigger in terms of number of properties, this is only the number of new homes that are there. The piece that's potentially much bigger is people who have a house that can then expand their home. In essence, the side yard setback gets smaller, you know, if they control both sides of property boundary or they and their neighbor agree. And that, it would affect, you know, half the lots, two-thirds of lots in there. So potentially, buildings could be posed to a side property. And that, you know, I can't tell you exactly how many, but somewhere in the neighborhood, one half to two-thirds of lots in there, if the neighbors are. Obviously, that's pretty good. This is also from the, as we go through all the zoning changes from now on, we're going to talk about what's the standard of Hampton, it says about it. So it's again in that appendix A where it says, things to spend more time considering. Item C says, consider zero lot lines to eliminate the thirty-foot setback.
Wayne, or Carolyn, or whoever, does this apply only to the primary structure? Would it apply to accessory structures?
Accessory structures are separate entry, so it'll apply only to the attached, the primary structure.
Okay, so if someone.
But remember, the accessory structure already has only a four-foot setback. So practically, it only applies to single family home because we already allowed this for access.
Well, like an attached garage or something.
Because the tax isn't part of the primary structure. So the attached garage would be the four feet that we have.
What's the difference between the red and the green in the map?
Oh, just the zoning district, so you are being U R C.
He has a color printer, obviously.
Okay, any other questions on this particularly? Okay, will you have public comments on this? Okay, public comments on this?
Steve, is this the one we talked about where you can actually have the lot line through the structure?
That's actually, one of the impetus is for this in the first place, as you've been around for a long time. There's a habitat for humanity house in Pine Brook Curve, where they built a house right in Pine Brook Curve above Big Wad, both was in Savage Chevrolet. And it was going to be a two-unit house. And they wanted to do basically a zero lot line development. They wanted to sell each property owner their house and half the property. We didn't have zero lot line development at the time, they had to create a somewhat cumbersome structure of a two-unit condominium. And so we said, well, you know, we like this unit, we allow, we allow this units of two-unit homes. This would be true for many of the two-unit homes, that's why we chose U R B and U R C. Those are the districts where two-family homes are allowed by right. It's not, there's anything wrong with two-family homes as opposed to single-family homes. But in essence, absent this language, zoning is forcing people to two-family homes and not allowing back-to-backs.
Public comment?
Yes, my name is Jerry Buckher and I live at one twenty-seventh Bridge Street. My neighbor's house here is in red and I don't understand why. Would somebody please explain it to me because I'm getting lost in this.
We're colorblind on our end.
Huh? No, my neighbor's is red and I kind of want to know why.
I can tell you generically, the query we asked for the computer was two things. If it's a vacant lot, which is not true in your case, is the vacant lot have at least sixty-five feet of frontage but less than seventy-five feet of frontage? If it's a non-vacant lot, the question is, does it have at least a hundred and thirty feet of frontage but less than a hundred and fifty feet of frontage? Because those are the people who potentially could get an extra lot out of this.
Okay, so do I still have, retain the right to either give the easement or not give the easement to go closer than give these feet?
If, if he wants a zero lot line on your side of the boundary, it would only happen if you gave an easement.
Okay. I guess the concern that I have, I mean, we're getting into sustainability and a lot of rezoning. And it would seem to me that we've got to find a better way to do this. Because here I am with this, I didn't even know it pertained to my neighbor. And it would seem to me that if we're going to start doing rezonings, there needs to be a better way to let people know either their property is impacted or the property around them is going to be impacted. I have property in Chutesbury. When the Chutesbury Planning Department is going to propose something, everybody gets a letter explaining what is proposed, what the impact will be, and offering people an opportunity to come and speak. I guarantee you, ninety-nine percent of the people who are on this have no clue about this. And I think frankly, it's one of the weaknesses of city government in North Hampton, that people don't know what is being proposed either on their properties or near them. And it would seem to me that some effort should be made to notify the people who are either red or green here, and the people who are around them, to let them know that this is being proposed. I think that's only fair. I don't think people should someday just find something happening next to them that they know nothing about. And, you know, this has wide-ranging impact on a lot of people. And if we're going to start getting into a lot of this rezoning for the city, I think we need a better process. And I really think that you have to communicate with people, you have to educate them and inform them. This is, I can tell you, I'm president of Ward Three Neighborhood Association, I'm speaking as an individual. We've had a lot of discussions about a lot of things that go on in city government and the biggest complaint we hear is that we didn't know, we weren't told, we weren't informed. And something like this needs to be communicated to people. People need to be told what's, what's being proposed and they need to be given an open opportunity to speak about something they know about. Am I angry? Yeah, that this might, you know, might have some impact on me, I didn't know it till I saw a little red dot. And I really think that this is an opportunity to find a better way to do these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cohen?
Adam Cohen from North Street. First, I want to say about the pervious surface, I'm encouraged by that, I think that's a great idea. And on the northasoc.org website, there's a short video presentation from the December twelve SmartBook conference, which talks about pervious surface and how it performs and how to do it right. So if you're interested, I encourage you to look at that. With respect to zero lot line, at that same conference on December twelve, one of the presenters was Bruce Young and he talked about a couple of the challenges he sees for planning. And one was, he likes the idea of implementing design standards in architectural ordinances. So quote, "We really need to think about how the infill happens because if we're saying we want a house between two houses, we can't get the neighborhood to fly onto houses that are just not helping the neighborhood." So I would feel more secure if we got the design standard piece taken care of before we start proceeding further with zoning changes that are, to aid in that infill. So I'm concerned this is not in the right order of doing this. The second thing I'm concerned about is that I'm concerned that incrementally in urban wards like Ward Three, U R B, U R C, we are slowly frittering away our trees and slowly adding to the pervious surface. The total of it, I'm concerned that's not being monitored. And I hope the city would ideally prepare a report every year by ward about, here's the percentage of tree canopy you have now, here's the percentage of pervious surface. So if you start to see those metrics going bad, you'd have some feedback and you could do something about it before it was too late. In terms of getting two abutters to agree to a zero lot line development, I mean, it's, it's good if the abutter feels they're well compensated, but I think that the people as a whole also have an interest in that, you know, the neighborhoods aren't denuded of their trees and again, the pervious surface. So there's larger issues than just getting the two abutters to agree. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's move on to the next.
Sorry, Jerry. Yeah, so Wayne, let me ask you, what implication of the scenario up in the Ryanville School area where there are currently very small homes? And a homeowner is able to buy the lot next door. He or she then may take down that existing house and then he or she can build a very, very large house right up to the lot line, zero lot line.
Remember, this is only for U R B and U R C.
Okay, so maybe help me add to us, neighborhoods within U R B, U R C that are very smaller ranch homes, where we may see one of the ripple effects of infill is a situation like that. And then we start having houses that are out of character with neighborhoods.
There are random ranch homes, but not big developments. You know, most of U R B and U R C is pre-World War II. You have a pocket in Florence, it's actually a pocket of ranch houses and you look at the map, the pocket happens to be U R A. So for the most part, no, yes, there's certainly individual homes there. Okay, so next one is the site plan review standards. Let me make sure you understand the context for this. Site plan review is required for all projects above a certain threshold. The most common project is projects other than single-family, two-family homes that are two thousand square feet or larger. There's some other thresholds as well, project for which the use requires six parking spaces. There's some other thresholds as well, project which use required six parking spaces. Um, the drive-in restaurants always, so two thresholds, but generally, a lot of projects are above two thousand square feet other than single-family and two-family. And site plan review requires approval from the planning board. Planning, under basic world site plan approvals, planning board has to approve the project. It's not like special permit, it can say no, but you can put reasonable conditions to the project. And the idea of the standards is to have, give more guidance to both the planning board and the regular community, although in some cases, the standards still give some flexibility for how they get it out. So the idea is sort of give as much flexibility as possible. So there's two parts to this. The first part is the traffic mitigation standards. Roughly four or five years ago, city council directed the planning board to start charging, or start making sure that incremental impacts from, incremental traffic impacts from projects were mitigated. For years and years, going back twenty-one years to now, when a project had a major impact on the intersection. For example, you know, Southentown gets built and the level of service in King Street would be damaged. We would say, "If building a traffic signal," or fix the traffic signals there. But what happened is if I was a developer building five single-family homes, or as in case of High Street tonight, one single-family home, of course, I'm not gonna have any measurable impact on the street, so we don't do any traffic mitigation. But these things add up, so you get places like Burt's Pit Road and Florence Road, where that intersection is in not that far distant future from getting traffic signals. And we'd never received any traffic mitigation, because it was mostly the traffic was lots of little projects that added up. So city council directed the planning board to get traffic mitigation. Maybe half the projects, maybe a little bit less, people provide the traffic mitigation in bricks and mortar meets. They build sidewalks and do all these. But solid more than half the projects, maybe two-thirds of the projects, people say, "My project's little, it's hard to provide bricks and mortar improvement. I wanna give the city cash, I want the city to do it." Because then we can aggregate cash from different projects. When the ordinance was passed four or five years ago, we had no idea what that cash from that was. And so the planning board's been trying to figure it out as time goes through. We have spreadsheets, we've been tracking all these things. And we've been looking at trends, and the number's been up and down, but generally, the planning board's been doing, if you look at the afternoon rush hour traffic trip, because that's typically where our roads get built around, the planning board's generally been charging a thousand dollars for every afternoon peak rush hour trip if you're in downtown or Florence, or at the edge of downtown in Florence, and two thousand dollars if you're elsewhere. But it, it, you know, it feels like a vacuum deal if you were here in the public hearing earlier tonight. Some of the audience might say, "Why do the High Street people have to pay a thousand dollars? Isn't that arbitrary?" Ultimately, there's a policy discussion, ultimately, the policy discussion should be in his own ordinance, so everybody can see, so it could be transparent. One of the, one of the goals from Sustainable Hampton Economic Development Goal Four is a streamlined and transparent process. So part of this is about transparency. Let's put the formulas into the zoning that people can say no immediately. It's also a goal specifically in appendix AA, it talked about clarifying traffic mitigation formula. Uh, and goal two, strategies, again, says clarify the traffic formula. We have five years of experience, we know what we're gonna do this. So that's sort of the setting, that's why we're doing this. Practically, what the, what this does is it, it creates two tables, two formulas. The first is it says, "How much traffic do we think most projects generate?" Right now, everyone uses ITE every five years, two years, whatever it is, that's a hundred and fifty dollars to buy the ITE manual, because it's the bible, and you can look up the bible and tell you exactly how much traffic every use generates. The problem is, if you look at the sample size, it's like sample size two or sample size three. So we use as a bible, because it's the best thing out there, but it's not that accurate. And so you're get, people who argue, so you get the new fifty-four East Hampton Road, the gas station, under construction, that says, "I'm a gas station with a little bit of convenience." Because in the ITE manual, that doesn't generate that much traffic. If you're a convenience store with a little bit of gas, you generate a lot more traffic. And so you have these hour debates on what are they doing. So part of this table is to spell out what those things are. The idea is it would be a rebuttable presumption. We're assuming that's what the table is. The planning board still has discretion to look at other things. So Cleveland Dickinson Hospital can come in and say, "Yes, we generate huge amount of traffic at shift change, but the shift change is between one o'clock and two o'clock in the morning." Or Call Morgan could come in and say, "Yes, we generate a lot of traffic, but we, we care about the roads. We're willing to adjust our shift change to avoid rush hour." So we won't create an impact on the street. Or willing to provide a bus stop or a bicycle stop. So the planning board has that discretion to, you know, to change those numbers. Those numbers also disclose the areas where it's public policy, we wanna encourage certain uses. You know, it really gets to the thing of policy should be in zoning. We've said, as a community, it's really hard to get industrial jobs, we really need industrial jobs, we're losing them as a country, as a region, as a city. The draft ordinance suggests here, assuming no job, no traffic from industrial jobs. It doesn't mean there's no traffic, it means we as a community are willing to subsidize that, because those jobs are so important because they pay so much more than their share of taxes. And so again, that's not something that makes sense for the planning board to do on a case-by-case basis, but it makes sense for the ordinance to do. Transpiration Parking Commission endorsed this at their last meeting, but one of them says, "Let's also exempt municipal uses." Doesn't really make sense for DPW to go to city council and ask for money to pay the city council for traffic mitigation. So that's the one table, is how much traffic we need to save. The second table in the area is, what would the traffic mediation fee be if the project wasn't doing bricks and mortar improvements? And if the project wasn't showing mediation like, you know, shift changes that aren't dirty gals? So when, when a developer says, "I wanna pay the fee," technically voluntary fee. It's voluntary in the sense that you're not doing bricks and mortar improvements, you're not doing, you know, competition man-man strategies. When you wanna pay the fee, what would the fee be? That's what the second formula does. And I told you already, the planning board's headed, a thousand dollars for peak trips close to downtown Florence, two thousand dollars elsewhere. The theory that has been, we know that people tend to walk more in, in urban areas. The nationwide figure is about thirty-five percent less traffic when people are close to those areas. This takes that a little bit more and says, "Let's create some incentives." So the goal here is instead of this one thousand, two thousand dollars, to go from zero up to four thousand dollars. And it's based on how many trip, you're both, based on how much will avoid trips being done, cars being done, how, what's the likelihood of trips being short trips? People downtown drive less than people on Turkey Hill Road. And when they drive, they drive shorter distances. And they have more options to take advantage of buses. People who are next to bike paths have an option to take a bike path to ride into town. So it tries to adjust all those things, so those are some serious. All right, you wanna do, the second part of the same word, if you wanna probably tap it first, which I did as part of the same. So the second part is, again, same thing as part of the site plan approval standards. It's, um, it has its construction standards. So right now, I'm building a subdivision in North Hampton. I know that I have to use ductile iron pipe, I know how deep the pipe has to be. And I know how thick an incident concrete sidewalk has to be and what kind of granite curbs I'm using. But if I'm doing Beaverbrook subdivision in Leeds, which is a subdivision all but named, looks and feels like a subdivision, but it's technically privately-owned street, the city would never take it over, it's condominium on a land, then there's no real clear standard for what my roads and water has to be. And so the idea is to say, we have these subdivision standards we've spent years on, they're good standards, they protect buyers from getting lousy projects that fall apart. And here's the rebuttable presumption is, we're gonna assume that all that stuff that we require for subdivisions, we're requiring for these products, you know. If you have to sewer line, we want the same quality we use for public sewer lines. If you don't have a water line. You know, because whether the city thinks over the water line or it's privately-owned, we have the same interest in protecting buyers and not having things fall apart in this. It's rebuttable in the sense that it maybe someone comes in with a different proposal, and the planning board can consider that. So DPW doesn't allow water lines above ten feet, whatever the number is, because that's how deep our back lines could stretch. Maybe a developer will come in and say, "Look, let's put it deeper and I'll put money in escrow account to pay for it being replaced." And the planning board might say, "That's fine." But at least it, we don't have these debates. Planning board's spent hours debating whether to use ductile iron or plastic pipe, and it's not really there at all. So it creates assumptions.
Public comment on the, on the three?
Hi, Carrie Anderson, Economic Development Coordinator. Passing around a memo from the mayor and I, from the mayor's office. Just wanted to comment on the traffic impact part of the proposed ordinance. Most of these comments were discussed by the EDLU committee at their last meeting. And I guess what we'd like is if you would consider this one a little bit longer. We have some concerns about some unintended consequences of the, of the fees. And, um, and would ask that, that we consider it a little bit longer. At that, at the EDLU meeting, the, the committee had asked the planning department to see if they could provide some information about how fees are handled in other communities. In part to look at what would be the competitive disadvantage or comparability for North Hampton compared to other communities for similar projects, whether or not other communities charge some kind of traffic impact fees. I think generally, the mayor's office understands this and doesn't necessarily disagree with the idea of, of traffic impact fees for mitigation, but concerned that some of the fees are high, and especially for smaller businesses. I've given you a couple of examples, so for instance, in number three, where, you know, a small three thousand square foot neighborhood grocery store in a neighborhood business zone could potentially be paying a fee of seventy-two to a hundred thousand, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. It's a fairly significant upfront cost for small business. Do appreciate that, that the ordinance as proposed acknowledges that there are other economic benefits on commercial industrial development and exempts fees in certain districts, and I appreciate that. One of the conversations that happened at the EDLU meeting was about the medical uses in the medical district. What we talked about is that, you know, the medical sector and the health sector is an important employment sector for North Hampton, and there actually is fairly significant demand for medical offices in the city. Had them for a couple of years. A little bit concerned about the impact to that sector, and also that because the state hospital is exempt and the locations, the hospital zone and highway business where medical offices are now allowed, would be subject to the fee that we would be shifting the medical office interest to the state hospital where we don't want medical offices, because they would have, that, that district is exempt. Also, in the business park, there's a question about, you know, similar to the state hospital, one of the reasons I think for exempting the state hospital was because it was developed as a planned project, and a lot of the traffic impacts of the project were incorporated into, and are being made by the developer as the overall project. So I think my assumption has been that as the business park is developed, that that would be developed under a similar circumstance. And I'm wondering, you know, if the developer makes all of these offsite improvements, will the individual businesses, as they come into the business park, then also have to pay an impact fee? So that's a question. So we'd appreciate it if you would, EDLU's meeting on Monday, I don't know if we'll have more information on what other communities are doing. But I think they wanted to discuss a little bit further before they made a final recommendation, and so with the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
I, I'm actually talking about traffic mitigation, I'm looking at the other part of the ordinance. It seems to be, to be very vague. It says, the additional part says, "The construction standards for water lines, blah, 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 private roads and other infrastructure shall be that set forth in the North Hampton subdivision regulations" that's what the planning board finds that a different standard is more appropriate. It's not clear to me what a construction standard really is in this context. It doesn't strike me as being just materials. It's, for example, the width of the roads. Does every private development now have to have the width of the roads that are required under city subdivision laws? The distance from road to sidewalk, the width of the sidewalk, the existence of the sidewalk. All of those kind of things. In other words, are we taking city subdivision standards and wholesale importing them to every other kind of development? And I think that's a pretty broad thing to do. I'm not sure that was what's intended here, but it's so vaguely written that it's hard to piece apart, just the materials part. Whether a water line, for example, is made of a cheap material that really shouldn't be used, or a high-quality material that is required, and frankly, that makes a lot of sense. It's, it's, it's that there's too many things buried in this one sentence to really have it sit where it stands, you know, sit as is. I'd love to know what parts of the subdivision control ordinance are being referred to in what way. And I do think that when we talk about transparency, getting the language clearer is one of the things that drives people crazy in this town that can't figure out what things mean. So a little bit of effort now to try to make the language clearer is time well spent.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I ask a question of Wayne?
Well, Wayne can respond to a couple of them. Go ahead, Karen. No, go ahead.
So, uh, three quick comments. First, in terms of Carrie's question of the business park. This is, Carrie's not sure, the reason the plant village isn't included is because the plant village has provided traffic mitigation in a different way. I, I would think the same thing would happen if the business park provided traffic mitigation in a different way. The ordinance specifically allows that. The ordinance says, if you're providing traffic mitigation, then this. The language here we're talking about is payment in lieu of traffic mitigation. The preference is always to have a developer do the work. Developers typically, their cost of construction is less than ours. So if a developer was doing the work for the, for the business park, then the fee wouldn't apply, it wouldn't be asked in the fee. That's the first one. Second one is, two suggested changes to address Doug's comments. The first is just another Scrivener's error. He was very nice when he read that language, he actually read a word that isn't there. So it says, "Set forth in subdivisions." It should be set forth in subdivision regulations. So then tables, right. So I missed that. And then, his point's a good one, I think the intention that I had of these drafts, and I think the planning board had in sponsoring it, is the language I would suggest to add is something to the fact of construction materials and construction methods. That's what we're talking about. The planning board would still decide how wide the road should be, whether it's a sidewalk or not. My assumption, for example, for sidewalks, is it may well be, the planning board does exactly what you do for subdivisions. But the goal this was really to end the Beaverbrook subdivision debate. What's the type of materials that's out there?
So the intent is to apply all the subdivision regulations?
The materials and the construction methods.
So the road, the road has to have so much base asphalt.
That's right.
And whatever, but it doesn't, it's not safe to do it.
That's correct.
So Wayne, are you saying that then the word for all such infrastructure would be changed to materials and, and that's what you're proposing?
So the the, um, construction materials and construction methods for water lines.
Maybe I'm not seeing this.
So where it says the construction standards for water lines are there? Okay. Replace construction standards with construction materials and construction methods. Okay.
And also insert the word North Hampton subdivision regulations?
I assume that it would apply also to sewer lines and paving practices? Yes. So it'd apply to all the, all the infrastructure in a project, but it wouldn't be, the assumptions of what infrastructure is there, subdivision regulations assume what the infrastructure will be, what the infrastructure is in the discussion for the planning board.
Wayne, you may have just misspoke when you talked about the, the amount per trip. You said between zero and four thousand per trip?
Oh, zero and three thousand. Thank you, yes. Thank you, yes.
The costs that are mentioned in the letter here.
I didn't see that.
Have you seen this? There's some pretty heavy numbers in here. Number three, I just. As if you wouldn't take a look at.
I gotta look it up, so I don't know offhand.
Is this something you're going to discuss with EDLU on Monday?
Yeah.
So we could put this off until you've had that discussion and looked at the impacts?
You certainly can. I think their assumption to put it off was that you would, they wanted to wait for you to act and then maybe discuss it. There's no particular time period.
I don't think that's, was the intention. It was for you to act and then for them to discuss it.
Well, I think we specifically discussed it was time between this hearing and we'll go back to ordinance committee.
Did you have someone to comment, Terry?
I guess I, my comment was.
About the business park, I think.
Yeah. I'm not sure that what Wayne was saying, that the language was clear about that if the developer does offsite impact or mitigation, that individual businesses would not be required to do that. I think that needs to be clarified in the ordinance.
The language is, "Project component must demonstrate that all cumulative and incremental traffic impacts have been mitigated." If those impacts have not been mitigated, then the planning board shall require.
So then your argument would be that if I want to build an office building in the business park, and the business park has done everything required by the planning board to accommodate my office building, then on the face of it, I would have, all of my necessary traffic mitigation would have been done by the developer of the business park?
That's correct. So, and that's the approach that mass development's done to the state hospital. The difference, the reason language is here is, as of today, mass development has already committed legally to provide all, either has provided or is committed to provide that mitigation. We don't know if that would actually happen from the, because this is what.
Well, it's quite possible for the person that builds the business park to anticipate some use, and a different use comes along, he would have to pay the difference if it were having a traffic impact. That's, that's a perfectly reasonable change.
Just along those lines, like a planned village already of the state hospital, which has, you know, gone through this process, and we recognize that they've planned to or have mitigated traffic mitigation, but what if in the future there's another planned village? Does this get them off of mitigating their?
Yes, I guess if that happened, we should make sure we include that district for party mitigation. We, if we realize.
Is this planned village, that's specific to the state hospital, or that's a generic district?
That's the only one we have in town.
I know, but if we let, create another one, then, under this zone, it's a matter of then, they could be scope free.
I think it's true, although, that would be, first of all, in the planned village's definition, it has its own traffic standards. But the second is, the reality in a new spot as planned village would require necessarily changes anyway, that that would be defined.
Sorry. Couple of things on the traffic mitigation. Wayne, you mentioned quickly something about municipal uses, municipal, that we were aware of. Part of the whole discussion we have around mitigation is trying to get applicants, whatever kind of development is, to think creatively around traffic, and hopefully not give us money, but to do something around transit or other means. So why do we want to let the city of North Hampton not have that discussion with the planning board? Wouldn't, I understand about the trading of money.
Yeah.
Because, say for instance, five, 10 years from now BPW erects a new facility down on in Florence. Would we want to have this discussion about alternative means of transportation, or having them chip into some kind of traffic mitigation?
The problem, I guess, the practical problem with the actual chipping in, is it seems like it would be, you know, the mayor could say, "Fine, they're gonna do it." Not that the mayor would do this, but just hypothetically. The mayor could say, "Fine, we do traffic mitigation. We're spending $400,000 this year on chapter 90. We're gonna take the chapter 90 money to traffic mitigation." It becomes a fiction, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be real money. The city already has a substantial commitment, and I'm not really sure, I mean, I guess to me ultimately, that's a political discussion, is that the city should be doing it, I don't disagree at all. But getting cash would be real cash.
Is there a language here that I don't see where it specifies the municipality?
You mean, is it in a different town?
No, no, it's in our town, North Hampton, the city of North Hampton.
So in the version I passed out, so this is just aim at the transportation parking issue. So an earlier version wouldn't matter. This version includes three recommended changes from parking transportation. On page two of that ordinance, towards the bottom, this is the project type. It used to say "Industrial Manufacturing Tradesmen," now it says "Industrial Manufacturing Tradesmen and Municipal." And then the right column, it says exempt.
The words that evolved through the both categories.
Correct.
I mean, I just want to point out, I mean, the Transportation Parking Commission reviewed it and made that as a recommended. I don't think we, I mean, those were recommendations that we made, but I don't think it comes to you guys amended necessarily. I mean, you still would have, you could accept or not accept those recommendations. I mean, all the committees that this was referred to will make whatever recommendations they make, and then all go back to the council, and then the council will have to sort through it, so. I mean, that was just some suggestions that we came up with.
We tend to, I mean, you're absolutely right. We tend, as the, as these things go along, to show everybody's memo, all the earlier committees have memos before them, but David's absolutely right. You could, you know, recommend favorable policy.
You're the original sponsors of the ordinance, and you now.
One more question around the mitigation, because we've been dealing with this as a board for quite a while. Developers are encouraged in the past to contribute money towards this traffic mitigation. And we never really are quite sure where it goes. So I think, to use that word transparency again, I mean, maybe we've talked about this a little bit. Can the city, the OPD, develop some kind of database that, or some kind of tracking mechanism that allows? I know it, down at the state hospital plan, we know where the money's going now. But other smaller neighborhood developments, $1,000 here, $5,000. We don't know where, what happens.
We have a special, I can pass it out to.
Yep, that would be great.
If someone creates a new dwelling unit, or even an accessory apartment, does that trigger the traffic mitigation fee?
No. Traffic mitigation fee is only a project which hits a threshold for a site, for a site plan group. So a usage allowed by rights does not have any mitigation.
Wouldn't that be a desirable thing to have? I mean, it's incremental.
Yeah, hard is a practical matter to do, and we guess you will set a certain threshold of saying, "Let's do it as part of a site plan." So I don't disagree with the logic, but harder to do. Because we don't have, because they're not coming before you, and they're not required to do that, that really becomes an impact fee which we don't have authority, don't appear to have authority on.
Does anyone have any questions, Terry?
Well, I was just looking at Terry's example like that, the neighborhood grocery store or something like that. One of the, the racist transportation parking commission is the whole discussion about pass-by trips. So, you know, the numbers you have here of the total numbers of actual people driving in and out of the business or residence, but there's also arguments in community about pass-by trips, or trips that are already on that roadway, who are only diverting into that business just because it's there. I don't know if we need to maybe alleviate some of those fear, initial shock value. Have some language in there about the planning board can consider reasonable reductions in this.
We did defer language, you say we wanted to strengthen it. Current language is here in opposed language, is, "Planning board retains the ability to use alternative calculations. Clear evidence to the contrary is divided." It's the idea saying the table's the default value, but you could do that. If you want to strengthen that language just to minimize the shock value, you still want to do that. Maybe that's an example, you know, for example.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking, for example, pass-by trips and.
And midnight shift changes, those are two of them.
Is the arithmetic right on how did this neighborhood grocery get charged? Have an idea how it would be, if it was arrived at. Wayne, one at a time, please, Keith, go ahead.
Gas convenience stores with fast food, which I guess this may come over, it would be 100 pounds per square feet. It's a grocery cart. There's only 12 per type of square feet for grocery cart, most of it retail auto sales. And convenience stores are typically attached to the gas station, that's why they have such high trip generation rate.
Right, that's correct. Right, 3,000 square foot mom and pop grocery store would be enormous for that sort of thing.
But that would come under the 12 per one.
That would come under 12 per one.
That's 36.
Right, so, because Keith's accurate, mom and pop grocery stores generate a lot less trips than you have gas pumps. You know, go to Florence and look at, you know, grocery store versus gas pumps with even smaller grocery store. Gas pumps in smaller grocery store get substantially more traffic.
Well, does it look like it's an unfair, I mean, it's a lot of money, but is it an unfair burden if they're having that much traffic? In fact, that's what it should be?
So again, this comes back to policy issues. If you're dealing with mitigating traffic impacts, no, not at all. If you're dealing with wanting to encourage some uses, then I'm fine with you exempting whatever we want to be open above for. You want to say, "We want to encourage mom and pop grocery stores in neighborhood business districts." That's fine to exempt, I'm just, I just want to forget the fact that unless they're just pass-by trips, our journeying trip is someone we're going to ultimately pay for. It's fine for us to say as a community, "We want industrial uses, we want office uses." You know, whatever those things are, that's fine, we should be able to work with them.
Is there any more comments from the public about any of these issues?
Just looking at this, I have a little bit of a concern. You might be discouraging mixed use in a place like Ladies Slipper Lane, in a sense, as we're condemning those people, if they want a quart of milk, they have to drive. And so you might be inhibiting the development of new, you know, mini urban centers, little bitty walkable neighborhoods in places where they don't exist now. Though perhaps it's an unintended concept, but, you know, they exempt that a little bit. Are you understanding what I'm talking about?
So you're talking about a couple of the farms that ladies slipper lane?
I, I'm thinking of the.
I'm envisioning it, I'm just.
I mean, the density maps, that, you know, there's clusters of houses in the north and in the west, and perhaps if they had a convenience store, they're somewhere around there, that might radically reduce, you know, driving. People can walk to it. That might be highly desirable, so this might, might be so freakishly expensive to do such a thing for traffic mitigation with discouraging. That would, I think that would be unfortunate.
Let me just pick up on Keith's point, and this way to address Adam's point. So if the way of softening the table is that, for example, the table, maybe the table would, maybe the language is something to the effect of, for example, less traffic might be generated by pass-by trips, by business of midnight shift changes, and by mixed use projects. So we're not changing the formula, but we say, these are the sort of things we look at, and they're all, they're all the typical examples.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to ask, I mean, my understanding when we talked about this in transportation and parking, these are IT numbers that you're using. These trip generation numbers are IT numbers, they're not, they're not ones that you've developed and have, so you're using the IT's data.
They're IT numbers, but we merge them together and simplify them. So IT has these huge number of tables. So there are certainly far fewer categories than IT had, and we just did a little bit based on experience. So if, you know, single-family homes is like 1.01 or something, and condos are like .98, so we balance it together. Some we did reduce a little bit. Personal services used to be in a different category, and it was higher. Personal service is like 40 per thousand. So we liked them, they didn't get us put in the other categories.
And to, just to speak to the memo that we were given tonight, presumably if a community, if another community out there is charging traffic mitigation fees, they're probably going to rely on the IT standards, or they're going to come up with their own, I mean.
Yeah, so let me address that.
I'm just trying to figure out.
We started discussions in June, I think, here, and Terry raised the concern. She had an intern over the summer who tried to address this. Called around and could find really no communities who had a formula. Which doesn't mean they didn't have a formula, it's just they didn't have a formula. I then, I was a speaker on, at a conference at Suffolk Law School on this variation on impact fees, where the development community liked impact fees, they knew what the formula was, or didn't like impact fees. And certainly, every developer, these are largely larger developers, these are part of the state. Every developer there said, "They all have impact fees, they just don't tell us what they are." And one of the problems with not knowing what they are is, the developer doesn't know what the number is before they negotiate to buy the land. And that, you know, if you know what the number is, that's part of your offer for the land, and you can plan your whole project accordingly. So one of the things I think we found out from this intern is, people, there's a lot of arm twisting going on, and there's not a lot of formulas out there. So, you know, Hadley, we all know about this. You know, a project comes in at Hadley and you get a couple of thousand dollars for open space, and you get $100,000 for whatever other issues they have. But Hadley just have a formula for that. So Hadley is the biggest example, frankly, in Western Mass, of a town who gets huge impact fees, but there's no formula for that. So Hadley is at the one end of the model, and they get a huge amount of money, far more than we're getting, but there's no formula. Amherst and East Hampton, who I called, don't have a formula, they get what they want. East Hampton's dealing with this right now, because Stop &amp; Shop is talking about traffic mitigation. It's not something they've dealt with very often. And so they don't quite have a formula for it. So it's a, it's a hard area, it's hard to compare, because that's.
But presumably their traffic engineers, Stop &amp; Shop, are using IT numbers to justify trip generation.
Right, in terms of this bottom table, that's easier. Yes, everyone uses IT, and everybody adjusts it based on local knowledge. It's, it's the dollar mitigation that's not wrong, that's correct.
But these fees are based on what you've been charging informally.
Yeah, they're charging, quite frankly, they're based on, we think they're low enough that we could, we would withstand illegal attack because clearly the impacts are probably greater than those things.
For me, it's really more a matter of whether or not it puts North Hampton at a significant disadvantage. Because already, the cost of development in North Hampton is a lot higher than it is in other communities, based on other fees that the applicant has to pay to the city, based on the cost of the real estate. So that's my worry. You know, River Valley Market paid $150,000 for their traffic impact fee. That was a significant hit for them.
Out of a $7 million project, something like that.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons, all those little things add up. That's in part why it caught, it was an $8 million project. And that's why the only reason it went through is because they got the new market tax credits. It's the only reason that project is there today. It's because they got enormous tax credits to offset the enormous development costs of the project.
On the flip side, the other incentive to businesses, if a network or a transportation network falls to pieces because we don't have enough money, to make it better, that, you know, people are going to come to a corridor that's incredibly congested and people don't drive, you know, aren't encouraged to go there, so it's, we're trying to balance.
Yeah, in large part because of River Valley Market, we're about to spend $150,000 redoing, doing design for the intersection. The Commonwealth, it will come out of, it will come out of city money, it will come out of other money. We're probably spending $400,000 implementing that. And we still haven't gotten to doing the sidewalks from River Valley Market up to Cook Avenue, which we desperately need because of the traffic. So the money doesn't cover all those things. The River Valley Market was beyond the edge of the development envelope. You know, clearly a project, Stop &amp; Shop gets redeveloped, it'll be much less, because it's right, you know, you can walk near the sidewalks. It's just part of why the formula going for that, at least the suggested formula going from the 1,000, 2,000 to the 0, 3,000 is in part to encourage development where we're saying we want it, where it's less affected by traffic.
I just wanted to comment first that Wayne's suggestion on the part I asked a question about, seems like it would do the trick. It was pretty clear and straightforward to use the words "construction materials and methods." And secondly, on this other discussion, which I'm really just thinking about. And secondly, on this other discussion, which I'm really just thinking about now for the first time. Wayne, your discussion with Bob around the business park and possibilities for traffic mitigation here. I wasn't sure if you said that what a business, what would typically be done would constitute mitigation? Because I didn't, I didn't see mitigation that way.
The business park, like the state hospital, is a little different than most projects. Most projects in town, they come in for you for a special permit site. Both the state hospital and the business park follow the same model of, the zone is actually planned, built, part district. It requires a special permit to permit the entire project. So the business park is anticipated that there has to be master developer, there actually has to be multiple property owners working together, coming in, covering whatever it is, fifty acres of land with an overall plan for the site. And so that plan would presumably have to deal with traffic mitigation.
Meaning a traffic light kind of thing, it would be on a double scale or I'm not sure.
You know, with traffic, you know, if it's, you know.
A roundabout.
That would be the minimum, wouldn't it?
Right, if the proposal, if, if, just give a range. If, if a business park became Bay State Gas, having a power plant, it might not have any traffic mitigation. If a business park was, I'm not sure medical offices are allowed, but let's say medical offices were allowed, that would obviously be, you know, a totally different, you know, that'd be enormous amount of traffic mitigation. And all the uses, it would be dependent on what's there.
And then just to follow up and get back into my own world, what, what would constitute mitigation in a residential setting?
Well, for example, I'll pick on you. Doug did the Oak Subdivision project, which was the first traffic mitigation project we had, paid a hundred thousand dollars in fees. The first fifty some odd thousand was used to pay the gap for the bike path from Ice Pond to Pathways. Ice Pond to Rocky Hill. The idea being, right now, everybody at Pathways, Rocky Hill, the Oaks, all that area over there, if they have a kid, my daughter's a friend who lives off Maple Ridge, and she was in Florence and she wanted to walk to Maple Ridge with her friend. And I said, absolutely not, we're not walking down Florence Road, we've got sidewalks. If you walk me out, come to Florence, I'll pick you up and I'll drive you to your friend's house. If there were sidewalks going down Florence Road, I would've said, sure, walk me to your friend, it would've been great. So traffic mitigation that gets me not to drive to Florence and drive my daughter to Maple Ridge makes me happy and mitigates traffic. So a bike path is a perfect example of getting cars off the road. George said, planning board doesn't always know where the money gets spent. Sometimes the planning board just gets traffic mitigation like the thousand dollars to take. And then it goes on to transportation, parking and city council. Sometimes planning board permits have been very specific about how that money gets spent. And then that becomes a condition. So Fifty Forty Hampton Road, the gas station, pays seventy six thousand dollars in traffic mitigation. And the planning board specified fifty percent of that is towards the Manhattan Rail Trail, that's the soft cost for Manhattan Rail Trail because it gets people off the road, fifty percent is for traffic common on South Street Route ten, because it's all the same traffic, we don't want to slow down the traffic. So you were very specific, we haven't spent the money yet, but you were very specific how you're doing it. So that's up the board. Tends to be the bigger projects here specific, the little projects that have to be left to go, you're not specific. But you certainly can investigate. Is that into your question?
Yeah.
We had inside for the Oaks, we had, we had thought about, one possibility was a survey to look at the signal, future signal on the corner of Berth Pit Road and Florence Road, we thought of using the Oaks money for that. We had PVPC do a warrant analysis and they said the city doesn't yet need a signal. So that's why we didn't spend it there. But that, that would have been equally legitimate use of the Oaks money as doing a sign for that intersection if it'd been ready.
To really get a couple of cards of the Oaks?
Ready for the next one? So the next one actually came before you, Terry can correct it, two years ago now. So two years ago, let me take you back on memory lane, those have been around for a long time. And we did a Florence plan, which must have been at least a decade ago. One of the discussions we had is, we know this transition of the old brick buildings in downtown and Bay State and Florence and Leeds is they go from single use manufacturing to multiple use buildings. And we know that every time a single use manufacturer leaves and it was multi-story brick buildings, it will never again be a single use manufacturing. Because it just, you know, it's not what people do anymore. So the Florence plan anticipated that, the Florence plan specifically said, you know, as this transition happens, we should rezon these properties from general industrial, which envisions big industrial manufacturing, some offices, to special industrial, which allows more mixed use. That's in the Florence plan, Sustainable North Hampton doesn't talk about it, Sustainable North Hampton citywide, it's not, it's not a neighborhood plan. So the Florence plan in essence still governs this. And so its recommendation stands and it says, as big multi-use buildings go out of business, we should change it from GI to SI. That property was on the market, the, at the time, the prospective buyer came in, asked for zoning change, planning board voted in favor of it. Went to ordinance and ordinance said, let's wait until we see if this deal actually happens and the deal fell through. City council session ended in the ordinance time. It's basically that the prospective buyer from two years ago has since closed the property. He has the same interest before. He asked us, we don't consider this a petition for zoning change because we went to the planning board and pulled out the Florence plan and said, will you sponsor this? The planning board said yes. David Murphy was the ward counselor, that he co-sponsored, those are the two presidents sponsors. The effect of the change would be just to rezone one property, it's a significant property, it's not a spot zoning. And from going from GI to SI, it expands the uses somewhat. One of the uses that would be, we don't allow residential in SI, but we allow live workspace. We have some concern about losing our living manufacturing base. Property owner has agreed to, to a development agreement, which basically says he would give up his rights to live workspace in the building. We presumably have that before it goes to city council. So the live workspace.
Okay, to like the district.
Okay, great. So we now have a development agreement which says, it doesn't commit the city to zoning change. It says, if the zoning change goes into effect, the property owner agrees not to do live workspace in the building. Otherwise, all the normal zoning changes, other than the zoning is allowed there. The sorts of things that SI allows, which GI doesn't, is somewhat more expansive for offices, although not medical offices, they're very high traffic. Somewhat more expansive for things like membership clubs, athletic clubs, art uses. I don't know if you can probably think of all of them, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it is somewhat more mixed uses, but generally low traffic mixed uses.
Service Center Road is all less so.
That's correct. Actually, part of Service Center Road, Service Center Road was all SI. We've rezoned a little bit and now it's out of business. So where the, the commercial area is legal because it was, but it was SI for years. National Felt, Eric Scher's building is SI. Two twenty-one Pine Street is SI.
So just on the agreement that was Exhibit A, does that only stick, stay with this owner? The PRC wants to sell it in two or three years?
No, it goes to successive owners.
And that's a deed's restriction or?
Basically binding contract, so it's with the city.
So if the city changed what it thought?
City could change them up, right. The contract could change with the notice city council.
So if in the future we thought it would be a good place for rent?
That's right.
Well, my, my biggest question on that piece of property is, and I'm not sure when it was a bustling pro corp, how they handled all the parking. But if that, if that building does have a reverb, how will the parking begin?
The developer has his plan, short answer for you is, if he makes changes which increase the parking demand by more than six spaces over what the building either had or was grandfathered for, it would kick in cycle approval criteria. They'd have to come before you and show you what this is. Now, the building he has grandfathered. So you look at what the old use was, which I'm going to make up numbers, these are not accurate at all, but to save a sense. Let's say hypothetically, the building required in the current zoning a hundred spaces. And let's say hypothetically, the building had fifty spaces. Those fifty spaces he doesn't have will be grandfathered forever. So he still gets credit as if he had a hundred spaces. But if he went to a use that required a hundred and six, then he'd have to come before you and show what those uses are. Even if he went to a use that required a hundred and one, he'd have to go to the building inspector to show how he could block. So he adds a use that requires one extra space over what was there before. He has to show the building inspector how he's doing that. I believe his intention is to leave spaces to do that. You know, obviously there's other options on the site. I don't, I have no idea what he's doing, but someone could tear down buildings, there are other options.
Public comment on that?
Basically, just want to speak in favor of it. This is something that I think the planning board and city council had approved, as Wayne said, two years ago. There's only a slight difference in the language of the development agreement this time around is that the developer has agreed to not using any residential uses in the property, partly because that fits with his development plan. That I think is an important agreement, or the surrounding industries that are close to that facility. They were very concerned the last time this came up that, that any residential use of the property could potentially be a conflict for their distinct industrial uses. So we support it and I hope we will too.
Could you clarify for me which building, is it beyond Bliss Street or this side?
It's between Bliss and, I'm, I'm fine, thank you for that.
All right, any other comments?
Stephen Athaway Northern.
Stand up and identify, sorry.
Stephen Athaway Northern, North Hampton. Just curious if the planning board knows how, if it looks like Two Twenty-one Pine Street went through this process around fifteen, twenty years ago. And just what the experience has been, was it a positive experience to work out the way? The, the thing that I keep wondering about, I'm looking at all these, is unintended consequences. Have there been any unintended consequences that you have regretted?
There have been problems, but I'm not sure it's a result of the zoning change. There, there's certainly been some problems with some of this artist space being partially lived in. And so a couple of times the building inspected, inspections, there were potential fire problems. But that's not the zoning, that's sort of the, it's related in the sense that that's used to do now. Otherwise, no. I mean, arts industry building has been a great incubator. And one of those we talk about a, a lack of industrial space is actually, often point out arts industry building. I'm not sure if it's still true, but it used to be, you could drive around to some other communities who were in North Hampton and say, oh, I know that business, it used to be an arts industry building, it happened with a building that left North Hampton. So it's been a great incubator for businesses that start. Artists unfortunately who are starving stay there forever. Other more successful businesses go elsewhere and unfortunately they're tamed. So in that sense, it's been very successful. Parking is a perennial issue, but I think it's been, it was an issue for the manufacturing facility as well.
My name is Matt McDonough. I'm the manager of Non-Tuck Mill LLC. We're the owners of the Ford Pro Brash. We've been working with Terry's office and we're planning on this zoning change and it has been a couple of years. Wayne was very accurate. We were very close two years ago and then it didn't pan out. But I think the development agreement, it really is consistent with our plans for the property and with the city's concerns about residential space. And we're, we're happy to have signed and executed this agreement. It's half executed, it has to be counter-executed by the, by the council. But, you know, we're in favor of this and we're excited about the projects. It's going pretty well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Another question for Wayne.
Sure.
How much outreach did the, the city do for contacting neighbors and abutters? Because last time there was some interest at the last minute, a lot of people said they didn't know about it. So how, how much upfront contact have we done this summer?
We identified, it was a hundred feet. We did a abutters, I don't remember what the distance was for the abutters. Three hundred feet, okay. We identified the abutters with a three hundred feet.
I also add.
How many folks looked at that? How many, how many?
I don't know the answer.
I also add that the mayor meets regularly with the Florence Civic and Business Association and she and David Murphy have met with them and discussed this project.
It was, it was everything.
Yes.
I think it might be less controversial this time because it was passed before, I think.
There were thirty-four abutters.
Anybody want to do? Not you, wouldn't. Do you need us to do that? If we close the public hearing, we don't need to do that.
Well, you may be interested in the public hearing.
We'll watch the tape.
And curl the whistle, please. Save an hour before the meeting.
So are we, are they? Any more questions? Unless we close the public hearing, we can't ask any more questions.
Well, two, two things that I could, one is, remember, all those things we beat you up on about not asking questions after the public hearing? That's mostly about permits. This is a legislative function, so it's a more informal process. So you can close the public hearing, you don't have to listen to more comments, but it's not that same sort of thing. The second thing is just be careful, there's a time clock once you close the public hearing, it's many days. So if you are just giving more time for traffic mitigation, if you close the public hearing, the clock starts ticking. And it's, it's some of that flexibility that just be careful.
Can we close the public hearing on the other three and keep that?
So if we close a public hearing, we close it and all of them will, unless we specify not.
Let's make a motion. So let's do a murder that. I moved the, because the public hearing on the first zoning, zoning change or? Clarification for? Do you want to address the table of, of street parking regulations and the change in driveway locations and parking law materials? Don't we give Lawrence service? Without the table of use. Okay, we're closing.
I second that motion.
Okay, public hearing and discussion on that? Does the planning board vote all in favor? Okay, is there a motion to break a man or not?
We didn't change that.
Oh, the one issue was DPO, if they're willing to take the task, strike off money development and put in departmental works.
You have to check with them first or you just want to?
I would just say if, if they're willing to do it.
If they're willing, we resolve that by time to go to city council.
Okay, I make a motion that the planning board recommends all three of these changes related to parking, driveways, the council with the one change applying, often applying to.
Number two, this is going to press this. I'll give the motion to close public hearing on zoning ordinance amendment regarding simplifying it to zero lot line developments. Eliminating expensive division of third foot side cutback.
Okay, were there any changes in this? Is there a second?
Second.
Just a discussion?
Yep.
We did hear from one particular person concerned that we're making changes to properties that we may not have let everybody know about. So from the map, unfortunately, we have the black and white ones. So to me, everything, the big black fallout, I don't know which red and green means. So the only thing I would think about this one is, do we want to, we have not a date to do close public hearing. But do we want to have a discussion on this with the people whose properties are going to be affected?
The only problem I had is, this assessment was really giving you a sense of the order of magnitude. The thing that would make me nervous is, I'm sure that some of these many properties we show are not really developed. So I have a number of properties which we don't show. This is an actor's, our GAS can guess. But, so that's, that's the only part I was just discussing.
I think this is a very difficult one to understand and I certainly understand why. We've heard in public comment tonight some concern about people not understanding it and having more time to digest. some concern about people not understanding it and having more time to digest it. So, I mean, and I read this over before in camp, so we've been worried about it. I would suggest leaving the public hearing open.
Public hearing open and such that it can be discussed further by the planning board or is further for the ordinance to be discussed?
By the planning board.
Well, that means that we have, we have to reschedule a public hearing for now. Time certain, time and place certain.
We used to be advertised, but we got...
Well, I guess the question becomes, how do we want it? I mean, do we want to, as Wayne said, contacting these, the individual parcel owners may not be...
I don't have to do it because I'm here. It's not for us to do. It may be misleading. If you want us to do it, as long as you understand we're doing our best, yes. It could be different ones that are missing. It's the technology.
Another point is that it still goes before the city council. We're simply recommending it.
But I think it might be helpful to see a couple of real live examples of this is where it is on East Center Street or whatever. And we could see it on the GIS map and we can see those two lots and a couple of scenarios of how... Because right now it is just kind of, this could happen and that could happen. I don't think that, I don't know what strategy we could use to get in touch with everybody. We leave that up to the ward three folks if they want to broadcast that within their ward. I don't think we need to go to X that we can advertise it again. But even for myself, I need some, some examples of some of these possible situations that might exist. When we talked about the zoning revisions committee and the sustainability plan, one of the aspects of that was to kind of creatively do some more outreach in just this situation, I think. So that people would get a better idea of how this might affect them or their neighbor. And as Wayne says, it may be very, very minimal, but we don't really know that yet at this point.
And it's just URB and URC, right?
Okay, well, we... Sorry, just remind me of the conversation. This is, the aspects of this are currently in the zoning. It's just they have to go through site plan or special permit.
It's for the site plan to draw up the fence. That's the only use of them. They need the thirty feet setback on one side here. And they need to control both proper, both properties. They couldn't do that.
But they do that's currently now or that's what's being changed?
No, so if you, if you own two pieces of property and you're doing thirty feet on one side, you can do it right now by one. If you want to get less than thirty feet, you don't have, on one side, you don't have...
So it's just the thirty feet.
The thing that kills probably if they have the thirty feet and you have two neighbors who are willing to do it, one person has to own both parcels.
So can, even if they have both, I mean, the thirty feet is on the site that's not zero lot. So that could affect about party.
But they have to approve it.
No. That's what I'm... I'm just trying to weigh up what the implications are.
What's odd about the current language is that third party is, as far as they're concerned, they're looking at a normal house. Why is it thirty feet whenever it has sixteen feet?
So we're not going any more than...
I mean, are we arguing with the person across the street or the person that's...
So if it's a single family home on that lot by itself, it would be fifteen and not... So it's not. So the other thing we could do is close the public hearing and not recommend it, set it back to drawing.
Yeah, you could, the other thing you could do if you wanted, I mean, you know, we're fine with it being incremental. This has been effective a few years. The part that I think is most problematic with the current language is the thirty feet. And that's probably the part that makes the least sense and affects the least irreparable. So if you, one option is to say, let's reduce the zero lot line, the non-zero lot line side from thirty feet to fifteen feet. And if you're uncomfortable waiting for another day, it's the rest. In, in not a minute, that's one option.
Or we'll just put it off for a couple of months or a month while you do out, what outreach is needed. Is this a venue for that public outreach or a separate?
Well, I'd say I like George, here's my own personal bias, but one thing I like about what George said is to me, I think the most effective groups in doing some of this outreach are the neighborhood associations. So I would, you know, because what George was saying is that I'd love to do that. I'm just not sure how to do it. Again, I'm happy to notify the abutters of this red parcel. I'm not sure we're getting the right people there.
I'll notify the lead civic association, though they're not URB or URCs.
Give some URB.
Are they?
Yeah, yeah. Up to every grade that is URB.
You see, even though this, the zero lot line is not only about empty parcels, I think anybody with an empty parcel next to them currently always has in the back of their mind what's going to happen to it. And I think it's worth it to give them another chance to perhaps come here and understand, you know.
Yeah, maybe we should just close the public hearing and recommend against it. Well, I don't think, I don't think we have to do that. I think the issue is not whether or not this group is for or against it. Because we haven't voted on it, but I think from what we've discussed, I think there's consensus for it. But the question is, have we had, has the public got enough time to see what we're going to do? Because we're making a rule that may or may not affect the property value or the ability for a house to be built. So I think that's... Are you the sponsors of the public hearings?
Yeah, we're one of the co-sponsors of them.
So do you have a vote on the closing of the public hearing now? Well, is there a wait? We have a motion in the second half. Short-term memory is shot. Well, I was just, if we just continue this to another date, is there a way that either you do a press release or, you know, I don't know what the... People have to take the responsibility in informing themselves as well as us informing them. And it's, you know, how far can we and should we go in trying to get everyone involved and maybe a little bit more outreach to the... Most of the effective things to give the neighborhood association more time to talk about.
We can notify the neighborhood associations. We can do a press release, you know. You can build weapons, stop that issue. Those things are all easy to do.
Well, I mean, we can't go everyone's door and talk to them.
We do an abutters list and they may not be inclusive, but do a good thing.
Send it out, mail it.
It's not that. I mean, based on that, I don't, it's not really hundreds of problems.
Well, you're talking about the ones he's identified though. The same sense that he's saying that the ones he's identified may not be well, but there may be other ones that aren't identified.
Once we identify, it may be accurate, may not be. It's about where new homes could appear. The numbers, the universe that's clear is much larger for where some expansion out there. But that's the problem. We didn't notify everyone yet in URB numbers there.
Randy, can I get a quick point of clarification? Does this ordinance affect the rear setbacks at all?
Yeah.
That's not...
All right, we still have a motion.
So, you know, I think we can deny, we can vote the motion down.
You can draw the motion. Make your little motion.
Who made it?
You gotta either close it or leave it open.
George, you have the open.
I respectfully withdraw my motion if that's how Robert's rules and orders work in this joint hearing.
Well, I think it's reasonable to accept it. So, so then we say we keep it open for a period of two months, you know, what's...
If we advertise, it'd be nice to have a date and time.
That's what I mean, but if we pick a day, there's a couple of months, enough time to allow you to do outreach. I'll make a motion that what would be the meeting day in a couple of months?
Um, we could do March 12, March 26.
Are you a town name or something? You don't have a month off? March, I'll make a motion that we continue the heating on that zero lot line ordinance until March 26. At, this is not on my agenda, it's seven PM.
Has to be this, planning board or ordinance or ordinance decide separately? You could do another joint public hearing if ordinance wants to or ordinance can have a separate, you can do anything you want.
One, we know you guys are going to have a public hearing at that time of date. That we as ordinance can decide to join you or not if we let you know. That's not correct. So I'll go to the...
And in the meantime, you will do some type of outreach effort.
Why don't you just amend your motion to include number three also? Well, I was just going to make that. I make a motion that we continue the item number three on the site plan subdivision requirements and traffic litigation to March 26. Did we vote on the previous one? No, we haven't. I was trying to combine them into one. I've combined them. Okay, we have one motion to continue both items two and three. Yeah, is there a second? Or two seconds?
Take care.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right, we're going to be efficient there.
Number four. The public hearing. I'll move to close the public hearing on the zoning map change for Non-Tuck Street. We can move to the second. Any discussion? All in favor? I make the motion that the planning board recommends a zoning map change for parcel two ninety-six Non-Tuck Street, map ID twenty-two B dash twenty-three from General Industrial Dispensary.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? We got to deal with the scripter here. So we're going to generate some... Okay, you're free to go. Oh, not the planning board. You're going to have to take your votes. Oh, you just voted for the public hearing. You just approved the thing. Take care.
Is it, but do you need to go?
Oh, no, it's fine. We like to take the...
Do you want to see the agenda?
We go to take them. I don't know. Yep, and I got, I got her.
Traffic coming through. I have more.
Oh, yes.
Do you know what your P S is? I gave her... Quasimodo. Happy to leave it here.
I apparently don't have a key to my car. I apparently have a key to my...
You know, we call it URB.
Uh, Nelson, let me know when you're ready.
Wait, what are you doing? Can I use this?
Someone tried to...
Everybody's leaving.
Where's the...
Thanks for doing this marathon session. Wow. Okay, I can sit here? All right, thanks.
There it is. You tell him tomorrow what you did.
I'm so... Because they're going to talk about the roadless thing and sort of say, you're completing this. Oh, okay. I don't, we don't have to wait. You know how long it's going to take?
It looks relatively straight forward, but I thought there were not...
Usually they... Well, I hit my eleven.
All right, good to see the screen from already.
There's a lot of us now.
Sitting at the big table.
I'd like to open a public hearing scheduled for nine fifteen PM on our request by T D Court for site plan approval to convert a single-family house to a museum and add three live workspaces at two twenty-five Non-Tuck Street, Florence, map ID twenty-three A dash two eighty-four. And we have a presentation.
We have it, but...
Doesn't do anything?
It's, I'm not sure, but... I gotta go to my computer. Is that what I need to do?
We, what's our point?
For the start.
I just go to the drive.
All control D. Blue screen. Yeah, where's your drive?
I can't see over here. Is it over here? U three? Is there a U three on there?
Yeah, U three would be there. You gotta go to start. Start. Look at open from my computer. My computer. Click on there.
There you go. Now click on the extra drive.
This is like the slowest computers.
Yeah. Must run Adobe or something. Try it again. I just discovered.
It's greater for another operator as a Adobe.
One thing is never do... You might as well just walk away. Here to work. We got, we get these other meetings on all of that.
Yo, Bill Gates has all these problems.
I see this was a specific request too, right? To bring, uh, bring this out of PowerPoint and then.
Okay. Where's that extra drive? Where is it?
It's over there, G.
That's not it. Did he put a C D in there or did he put in a? He put in a file drive.
There's a thing saying.
Okay, found new hardware. Send this to my.
Steve, did you see in that little article about me?
There we go.
Calling the technology coordinator for all of their.
It's like, that's what you did.
No way.
Ten and four in that thing.
No way, but it was great. I, all the I P staff, I agree.
George, come here and fix this. Like watching paint.
All right, so maybe we won't use it. Shall we tell the M I S to upgrade the computer?
Mr. Ruggles, you never had to deal with these issues, huh? What is this? Everybody's got Mr. and Ms. here. On C P A, you're George.
For control.
Very informal. As we give away money.
Is it opening?
Right click on it and then click on.
It's kind of hourglass. It's right click. Throw again.
I did it twice.
Okay, right click. Hold it down.
I just click as fast as you can.
Oh, look at that.
Oh, we're getting a reboot, huh?
We gotta reboot.
Oh, no.
Um, you know, there's a PowerPoint viewer. I wonder if you have to go into the actual PowerPoint viewer software and open that file?
I actually tried to click on that, but it wouldn't. This is what opened up. Can we close it and try?
I think it's done.
But that's, you know, that's, we're all eight steps behind.
Why don't you talk about something else for a few minutes?
I can start.
Well, why don't you start? You know, the other thing I could do is I could just lock, um, connect to my computer.
Yeah, that's, that's what Bruce does. We don't run with these C P A things. These rain one there.
Yeah.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, my God.
Hey, okay, they're just sort of patient.
Now, where's that computer anyway? Nineteen eighty-seven?
I don't know.
So what we have before you is, uh, with the site plan approval for project two twenty-five Non-Attuck Street. The, the project will be named Old Florence Comm, Commons, but here we have, um, just the Ruggles Center. And there we go. And it's, that's a picture, just a picture of the existing house and, uh, our existing conditions. Just to give you a quick overview, the existing house did, we have Non-Attuck Street on the right-hand side. On the east side is a, is a six-family home. On the west side, down below, the vacant lot. Uh, and then on the, uh, the north side is a butt up to, uh, the congregation church is up in back there. And then Persdorf is across the street.
Do you want to invest a point to what you're doing?
Sure.
Is that talking? Nope. It does.
That might take some.
Yes. You gotta reboot. So right up here is, uh, is a six, six-family home. In the S I zoning district, this, this is a vacant lot, which is S I zoning district. It's about a hundred and twenty feet of frontage. It's about a half acre lot. Persdorf is over here across the street. And, uh, the, uh, but up and back here is the congregational church up and back here, and there's a single family home over here. That's also. The, uh, what we're trying to do is take this single family home and convert that to, uh, what would be considered educational and historic and museum use. And that will become the David Ruggles Center. In back, we propose to, uh, develop a, about a three thousand square foot footprint in the back of that that will become live workspace in the S I zoning district. Three units with a thousand square foot living area in each unit and a thousand square foot work area for each corresponding unit. There it goes. And so you see the, the, uh, the dark mean area here. This is the wooded area up and back where the slope begins. This is grassy area here. This is a proposed new building, existing building, and, uh, future park. And here's Non-Attuck Street right here. There is some wetlands back in here. And here's the wetland buffer right there.
But just to, before you go too much further, can I just clarify the plans that we got in our packet, Carolyn? Are they what we're seeing up here basically? Are they same dates? There's a lot of, I mean, I know that's a different visual, but more or less.
Is it this, this one?
Yes. I mean, the only thing is should we get a revised survey plan or just the actual boundaries? Um, and then there was an updated, um, plan related to the landscaping, which I don't know if that reflects the revised plan, but, um, that should have been in your packet though.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
And this, this is here is actually, um, the planting plan, but we had this one with the colors on it. So I just, just to give you, we're gonna get into more detail on that, but just, just to give you an overview, um, of what's happening. And just to put it into context a little bit, this is, and it goes outside of the actual, you know, zoning issues. But, uh, one of the reasons why, you know, we're here doing this is because, uh, it wasn't my first use. And, um, and it's actually, from an economical perspective, it's not the highest and best use of the property either. But what intrigued me about this project was, uh, an idea, an idea by Steve Strimer. And as I sat with it a little bit, it became more and more compelling. And, um, for, for a few different reasons. One of them would be, um, that it's a project that kind of, uh, projects some very high ideals. And so that kind of is a, kind of captures your eye a little bit at first. But even sitting with that a little bit more, it's like, so, okay, how, you know, how can we do this? This is a great idea, but how do you get it done? And it fits a little bit into an economic model that I've been hoping to implement in the future, which is, uh, based on real estate development, but it benefits the common good rather than your stated outcomes as profit. Your stated outcomes are what is the common good? And so this kind of came close to what I was thinking of doing in the future. It's like, why don't we see if it fits? You know, and it, and, and I was thinking about that. And so then as, as we started talking about it, there was a possibility to incorporate the concept of collaborative development, which is not me putting a team together and coming up with this great idea, but it's getting these, you know, these groups that may have, um, disparate interests in coming together and coming up with a plan. And so the, the concept of collaborative development, I thought, is, is pretty appealing. I read a book on it about five or six years ago, and I said, wouldn't that be a nice way to do, to do plan? And so, um, I think it is a little bit important just to stress so you have a clear understanding of what we're trying to do. And I just want to have Steve just talk briefly about, um, what the, what the Ruggles Center will be.
Right now?
Yeah. And that's actually the, the David Ruggles Center for Early Florence History and Underground Railroad Studies.
Well, I don't, I've been doing, studying Florence history for the last ten years. And every year on a regular basis, we find new, more wonderful things that happened up in Florence that have been kind of forgotten. In two thousand and one, uh, when the statue went in, uh, in two thousand and two, we started looking for Sojourner Truth's house and found it inside Kimball Houser's house. It had been forgotten since nineteen twenty-six probably that that was her house. We found David Ruggles' house himself, uh, his, his own house, which had been moved up to forty-seventh Florence Road. And all this together has led, I'm a member of the Massachusetts Underground Railroad Network with people from New Bedford and from Worcester and from all over the state. And it's become generally recognized that Florence has probably the finest intact architectural heritage to document the Underground Railroad and abolition, uh, short of Beacon Hill in Boston. There are, I, I know of twenty Underground Railroad-related sites that need to be explored and better interpreted. And that's really the goal of the David Ruggles Center, is to provide a place for materials to come together. We won't be probably collecting, uh, archives, you know, valuable documents. We'll be making good copies of documents, uh, collective copies. Where I work has donated all the copies that we'll ever need at the center for free. So much of this work has been pro bono. We, Mark Nijam, our lawyer, has donated his time. Tris Metcalf designed the whole, uh, plan that you're seeing here tonight, pro bono. Craig De La Penne is working on trying to market the units pro bono. So it's a real community effort. I've led, led over seven hundred people this last two years on walking tours of Florence and worked with teachers. We're hoping that Northampton kind of adopts, Northampton teachers in particular adopt this as a history center. I can imagine, uh, teachers from Jackson Street having a key to the center and being able to go there themselves with their students. So that's kind of what we're envisioning. It's really remarkable how Jim has, um, from the beginning of the demolition delay through thinking we're gonna, he's gonna donate this building to us and let us move it to finding out it, it's thirty years older than we thought. Their historical commission, uh, went into this thinking it was probably eighteen seventies, eighteen eighties. It's now eighteen forties, eighteen fifties that we've, uh, identified the structure. So it's become more important historically that way. So it's more critical that it stay on its original, uh, foundation if at all possible. And that's what this new plan really does. And so we're incredibly excited about it. I brought materials here, uh, if anybody wants to read up on this amazing story of Non-Attuck Street, which really was an enclave of Irish-born Americans and African-Americans, um, in Florence, uh, in the eighteen fifties. I don't want to take up too much more of your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer afterward.
Thank you.
So when Steve came up with the idea, it, you know, you start thinking about the common good. It's like, what exactly does that mean? And I'm an idealist and it's so, to a fault sometimes. But I, what, I probably, we probably would be here looking at another, you know, another plan if, um, if it did, if it wasn't a projection of some of the highest ideals that, that we value in terms of liberty and freedom. And I know it's a little abstract, but this is where, this is the context of what we're coming from here. And so in terms of the common good, vague, a vague topic, but as I sat with it for a while and I, and, and you see, you see some of these ideals being played out on a national stage this summer with the, uh, with the election and everything. But when you have an institution like the Ruggles Center that goes very deep into our culture and it's a manifestation of these highest ideals, that is a selling point for me. Because now you've got, you've got it inside, you know, where real people are getting at it and they're gonna have this subjective, subjective experience of some of these ideals rather than, you know, these objective experiences that they see on the television or read in the Constitution or something. So I really think that it's gonna become a very significant institution in Northampton and Florence in the future. And we're certainly gonna work very hard for that to happen. And so the other component of this is the live work area. And we gotta cut Craig's slides for time, but he's just gonna talk briefly about the work, live workspace, which is three units in back.
Yeah, the, the larger structure of what you're looking at, the plans here, it will look like a traditional New England barn. There'll be no vinyl on it. It will be clad in hardy clay, but fiber cement material, which means that it doesn't shed paint for twenty years. It looks like wood, cuts like wood, nails like wood, doesn't shed paint, no vinyl. There will be cupolas on this building. It will be garage doors on the first floor, but they're not gonna be plastic piece of junk garage doors. They're gonna be carriage doors. It will look like nothing else around. It will look like it's been there for a hundred years. It will be Northampton's first live work project.
Can I interrupt this?
Sure.
Can we get into the meat and potatoes of this? It's ten thirty and I think this is not gonna be that controversial. We don't need a whole lot of.
All right, then I'm done. I'm done. It's late, I know it is. I'll just say that there's gonna be three units, thousand feet of live space up, thousand feet of studio space below. There'll be two and a half baths, excuse me, one and a half baths upstairs, two bedrooms, one and a half baths upstairs, one half bath in the studio or work section. There'll be a condominium association with four units. The David Ruggles Center is one of the four units. No one will live in that building. The only residents will be in the back in the large barn structure.
That was meat and potatoes. Do you have a question?
Will there be commercial retail, um, opportunities in that barn-like structure?
It's a special industrial zone, so anybody that wants to come forward with a use that's permissible in a special industrial zone, I think will be permissible. I don't, I'm gonna try to market it. I work for the Murphys. I'm gonna market it for, for as unobtrusive and collaborative uses together. It's gonna be a very collegial association, I envision. And we, we want people to, to have uses that are, that are conducive and collaborative with the David Ruggles Center, number one, and with the neighbors. We're not gonna try bringing a use that's gonna be onerous to someone else.
It's a good question because there's traffic and potential traffic in fact. Carolyn?
I was just wondering if the, the people who inhabit the, the live workspaces will be actually working for the Ruggles Center?
No, it's gonna be volunteers in the Ruggles Center.
And, and actually, um, and I believe the zoning in Carolyn's, Craig, but I believe, I think the zoning is pretty specific in terms of live work areas as to, as to what the uses can be. It's somewhat limited, I believe, it's supposed to be owner occupied and that the people that live there have to have their work area down below. So it's not like there's gonna be six units there. It's three units. And hopefully we get, you know, the, the artisan craft people to come in and, and buy these units.
And speaking of parking or traffic, this is the only development you'll see come before you probably this year that has, it's called zero commute development. Live work means people are gonna be living there. The commute is very short.
It, it hits all the buzzwords. It's, you know, smicrow, infill, zero commute, energy efficient, all, all of that. But the, you know, moving on, I just, the elevations here, and these, this is, we, we started getting to this point. We're getting to the nuts and, and bolts, and it took a lot of work to get us here. But Tris could just briefly explain the, what they were doing with the elevator. This is the front elevation.
I wanted to repeat what Craig just said, but basically, again, the idea, and of course, being an elevation, as you know, it's very foreshortened. But in a perspective, the barn wouldn't look that big. But the idea is it's supposed to be a barn behind a residence structure. And it's basically to make the project viable, um, it, it's fairly, um, you know, fills the site. It fills right to the setbacks, wetland and side yard. So, um, you know, it's trying to be scaled down and up so it looks like a red barn and then the white additions. I don't think there's any more.
That'd be the rear elevation.
Rear elevation.
Conservation Commission wrote on this today?
They, they reviewed it. Um, they want us to come back with some changes and we meet the changes. They want us to come back with some changes and we meet the changes and we'll bring those back to them in two weeks. And they're relatively minor changes in terms of moving things around, showing some planting plan, moving the building off of the, a little bit further away from the 10-foot buffer. Four-inch perforated pipe changed to a solid pipe, that, that type of thing.
So I think we should come back to that little piece at some point. The, the elevation there, the barn doors, are those garage doors?
Yes.
Those are parking lots, parking for one single car per unit or?
It's not intended as garages, it's intended as access to a workspace, loading.
So it's not, the parking will be outside?
Parking will be outside.
I guess, I guess I'm a little confused about the whole thing. It's really, I mean, I guess the proposal, when I first saw it, I thought you were talking about the museum, but really it looks like a three-unit building behind a house. The house may or may not have to be a museum because it's gonna be part of a condo association. So whether or not the museum is in there or not, really what you have is a four units on one lot.
Correct.
I think the museum, I admire the, the effort. I, I, I'm wondering how that affects what we're seeing, because what we're, what we're seeing is four residential units on a lot.
No, you're proposing, you're saying three live-work units being added to a site that has one existing unit that will be converted to a use that's allowed in S.I., which would be nonprofit.
Right, but if everyone was converted back, could that unit be converted back to residential at any time?
It would require, no, once it converts to a museum, it can never go back to residential because it's zoned S.I. So it can be any other S.I. use that's allowed in the S.I. district, but what, but it's non-conforming now for residential use. So if, for instance, someone wanted to continue residential use, they'd have to go to this, or change, expand the residential use, they'd have to go to the C.P.A. to get an approval for, under a finding, to continue that or expand that use. So once it gets taken out of the non-conforming status, it can't go back.
So it can be a live-work space, right?
Right, but that's different because the live portion under, by zoning, in definition, the live has to be on the second floor above the workspace.
There's one other wrinkle here, too. The C.P.A., I serve on the C.P.A. committee with George. The C.P.A. has voted to spend $150,000 of C.P.A. committee money, C.P.A. money, towards this. And there's a deed restriction on this structure. And that can never then go back to a residence, if I'm correct. And is that correct, George?
It can never go back to residence or can go, can be converted to live-work though?
The city's gonna have a large say in that because the deed restriction is right to the city to oversee any use change.
Basically, the deed payment, you're talking about.
The deed restriction is around alterations to the building itself, more than anything physical alterations, I think, to the exterior and interior, rather than a use, I believe.
And if I, I just would make one more comment on the, what we're, what we're proposing is, and this is where we kind of had to back into this because it was a good idea to say, you know, Steve, for the last year and a half, I've had my hat handed to me more times than a lot of people would, could withstand. And I said, I, I wanna do this, but we gotta figure a way how to do this. And this was where the real collaborative part of it came in. I had, originally, we were gonna have an eight-unit industrial building going in there with garages and offices up above and, which, from an economic perspective, that's the highest and best use. But now if you put it into this other model where your stated outcomes are not economic, but more towards the common good, and you say, okay, how do we get it done? So then we take the project, we back into the, into, this is, and how you back into it, rather than saying, okay, these are our costs, this is what we can get for it, this is our profit margin. You say, this is what we need to get to, in order to get these guys into this museum. And so it's a little, we do it backwards. And if we had, if we could get six units in there, then we would say, great, here's the house, you're all set, ready to go. But in order to make this happen, the minimum, we tried it with two and it didn't work. So we had to go with three, and in three units, it works.
All the uses that they proposed are allowed in S.I., because the questionnaires were really about why it's, like, it's the building itself?
Oh yeah, well, I guess that was, that was Mike, because what, what we were talking about, three live-work and then one, it's all, they're four condos, it's a condo, basically, you were saying. So that's why I was concerned, that front building, could it, if it's a museum now, could it be converted back?
Yeah.
And you're saying?
Oh, not back to residential, but it could be converted to a live-work space.
Right, so it could, you could end up with four live-work spaces on that property.
I must say, in seven years with LandGuard, I never heard anybody mention the highest and best use. Didn't know that was still, the term was still around. Have to think, have to remember that.
What are we being asked to approve here? Can we go ahead with this? Is there anyone who objects or can we get public comment?
Well, you probably wanna get public comment. There were D.C.W. comments that have asked up to you all. And then the Conservation Commission did review it and has asked the applicant to come back, so that's another issue. But yeah, it would have, we probably would do understand what any public comment might be.
When you said the ConCon asked you to move further from the buffer, is that what you said? So you're gonna be moving that back building?
Right, on my plan, it says 10 feet from the wetland buffer is gonna be the footprint of your building?
Let me go to the, to the color scheme here. So the, this black line is the wetland itself. The buffer line is up in here and with this, the building right now is about two feet off. And then, except for maybe like this corner right there and there, it's probably one foot off. And they were concerned about that. So what we need to do is probably, in this area right here, come over and to, because we, the viability of these units has to be about 1,000 square feet for living in workspace. And so, so long as we get our footprint to be about 3,000 square feet, then we, we have it. So we'll shorten this area up here, bring it off the line a little bit, create a little bit more space in here. And we have some space in here, too, and maybe a little here if we have to. But we may have to change that footprint, you know, alter it a little bit to get it off that line somewhat. But it's, it's not gonna affect any flow calculations, it's not gonna affect any other aspects of the, the plan.
So that's gonna, well, it's definitely gonna change the footprint of the site plan.
Slightly, but it shouldn't affect any of the standards that are set in, in the zoning. Just the aesthetics of the, of the, of the building. It's not gonna change any, you know, any of the calculations from, from a drainage perspective.
I understand that, but when we approve the site plan, we, this seems more than a minor. Well, if you move that building, you're gonna impact on the parking, you're right up against it now, right? Something will have to get adjusted.
Well, we would probably shorten the building.
I'm, I'm just thinking to avoid that and having to come back for the amendment, have, say, the approval tonight. It might be worthwhile, get as much information we can and give as much feedback back. But, but, you know, if you're gonna change the configuration of that back building, if we approve this the way it is, with the elevations and stuff like that, and then you change it, it's gonna be probably more than a significant change or insignificant change than it require you to amend your site plan. So that's what I'm just saying.
Clearly, we should continue the hearing until they make the modification. Is that what you're saying?
Well, should we give any, I'll be back.
If, if, if I may, I understand what you're saying. If the footprint stays the same and it, and it doesn't affect any other aspect of the plan, then maybe it could be an administrative change that's, that's done. Obviously, if we change it dramatically, then it, it would go beyond that. But I, what I would ask is, the, the, the clock is ticking on my end a little bit here, which may or may not, but it could, you know, affect things somewhat. If it's possible for the city board to approve this, you know, with your conditions and with a possible administrative change, so long as it's not drastic, if you could approve it with those conditions, because I've sacrificed myself personally, I've sacrificed a lot to get this plan going. Not only from a timeline, but from an economic perspective. And it has, it has caused a lot of problems for me by accommodating this. And so if you could accommodate a site plan approval, and I'm not asking for, you know, for anything drastic, but if the footprint stays the same and it's not that big of a, a deal, then if we could do it with conditions in a, in an amendment, not an amendment, an administrative approval.
When, when is the ConsCom gonna take it up here?
Two weeks.
Well, you can't do anything until the ConsCom passes on it, so can we, we have to like, no, I'm gonna say no.
Well, we have one other continuation, but...
What is it? North Street?
North Street. And then Mass Development's coming at 7 for an informal discussion. So you could, you know, do it after the 8 o'clock.
I guess the question is, is it permissible for them to add little bits to the footprint of that, change the shape of it, that back building? It could be, is there such a thing as administrative change?
Well, I think it's unclear exactly what the changes are gonna be. So you might, I don't think that there would be any direction that you could give staff to say, if it goes this much, if it looks like this, then it's okay, if not, send it back to us. So what, I mean, once you give grant it, you're not gonna be able to, you know, there may not be any issue when they make the changes, but you, I would think that you probably wanna see the plans as, as proposed and that's what you're voting on.
We have, I think we have some other questions and comments, too, that might impact, there might be others, some plan revisions that have to be drawn, maybe it has to do about parking, maybe it has to do about the stormwater system. So let's hold in abeyance right now whether or not we're gonna vote up or down on this till we have a little bit more discussion and see what other information is coming.
Gentlemen in the audience here.
Hi.
Looks quite ingenious.
Sharp, yes. I, yeah, feel a little bit of this drawing. In regard to the Conservation Commission, unfortunately, I wasn't there today at the hearing, but Jim informed me of what was the decision. The zoning ordinance for this S.I. is, there is a 10-foot buffer that allows typically for wetland, not that I'm trying to minimize any wetland. There is a little wet, if I can, may have this getting. There is, right here at this point, there is a pipe that apparently there used to be spring right here. There is a spring that generates water all the time and creates wetlands. Now, this house has a yard right here in the back that has been mowed for years and years and it's just been maintained. This is all yard. But when you go and check this soil, it's hydraulic soil, hydraulic soil that shows that there is a wetland there. How valuable this wetland, I mean, it's been maintained and been mowed, there is a grass there. The zoning allowed 10 feet and so we said, okay, let's put it 10 feet. Actually, we moved it two, two feet away from the, the buffer and it's 12 feet from the, the wetland. In terms of any other water or any other contamination from parking lots, it's all going to the other side. There is no water, dirty water that pass by, you know, through the D.E.P. that has to be treated or any new point discharge that goes into the wetland. So the impact to this little wetland here is, there is essentially no impact in terms of contamination of dirty water. I, fortunately, I didn't have the chance to explain it to the Conservation Commission Board, but I'd like to...
But this is not our, this is not our area.
But I, I want just to, to understand the picture and, and, and the part of the drainage. I don't know if it's too late, everybody wants to go home, you want...
Well, that's not the only point. You should take the ConsCom issues back to the ConsCom. Yeah. We don't wanna hear about wetland, right? And I think that we, I think, I said, this thing, it looks to me like the feeling of the members of the board are that they want to see the plans from, from their red line.
Just to, just to, just to reiterate a little bit, this is, this has received support from C.P.A., or CPC, and it has a colla, this is a collaboration with...
It has nothing to do with the issue.
I understand it, well, no, I understand that.
I don't wanna hear it.
Well, this is a collaboration with the City Historic Commission also. And if there's, you know, if it can be accommodated, that, then, that's all I'm asking. If, if it can't, then we'll come back in two weeks. But it would be nice to have some collaboration amongst departments also.
We understand the issue. And I don't see any grand swell of opinion against this project. It's not, we're trying, not trying to delay it or hold it up, we're just, we want to see all in part, that's all. Well, it just happened to be the same, that they were gonna have to change the footprint of the back building because of the ConsCom's concerns, so that's what piqued my interest when I said they were gonna change the footprint. I was just trying to...
I know, the reason why, the reason why I'm pressing it is because when the clock starts ticking, in February, the clock is already ticking with, with the bank in February, there's gonna be some issues that's going to arise, it's gonna add some significant cost to this. At a minimum, at a maximum, it could derail the project.
But if we approve this tonight, you're gonna have to come back and do an amendment, so... Because you're gonna change the building footprint, which is gonna be enough of a change to require you to come and manage your site plan, so.
Well, may, so maybe, does the, does the 20-day period kick in once the amendment is approved? Or does it kick in from, because that's it...
The 20-day appeal period?
Because this is, it's, it gets complicated and that wouldn't be...
If you do an amendment, it starts again, right?
I mean, the problem with the amendment is, it takes, you know, three months longer. Whereas if you continue it, it's two or three, two to four weeks. With an amendment, you have to come back, refile, resubmit your fee a month ahead of time. So that's two to three months, so an amendment is a much longer process.
And, and so the, your, your feeling is that the changes are significant enough where it could not be done administratively?
What are we talking about, the changes are? We, the thing is, we don't know, and if we approve the plan, it has to be what we, if we approve the site plan, it has to be what the drawings say, or you have to come back. And if you're gonna be able to modify it to show to the ConsCom, you should be able in that same period to modify it.
So let's ask some other questions, so the applicant and his team can make other plans, other changes to the plans, if need be, when they make changes. plans, other changes to the plans, if need be, when they make changes to the plans in regards to the wetlands and the footprint. My question might be, this is live-work space, usually in any kind of living space, if people wanna have access to the outdoors for a picnic table, maybe a swing set, maybe things of that nature. If it is wetlands designated in the back, granted, it's mowed now, and it's kind of a backyard, how will you handle that kind of arrangement?
Well, that's one of the, the ordinance is pretty straightforward, and, and the conservation ordinance is that there's no encroachment into that area, which is why we need to move it off the line, so that we could have a little bit more significant of a walkway in back there. Right now, there's two feet, I think they're gonna recommend us that we're gonna be about four or five feet off of the line.
Where are people gonna put their hibachis and lawn tables?
Hibachis?
I'm just trying to, you know...
There's some area, you know, on the sides that they can, they can do, they have that whole space downstairs, and you know, you're not gonna do, put a hibachi down there, but, you know, but, and that was my, that was my, you know, we said, we, you know, we want that to stay grassy area, so they can put a picnic table out there, but...
Their, their conscom...
They, they wouldn't let us go.
Mostly now, the, the front of the, the whole operation, it's the ruggle center, the proposed ruggle center and parking, so what will you do about snow removal for the parking area?
Some on each side, there's a little bit of being down there, but if any significant storm, or an accumulation of significant storms, may have to get trucked out.
Could you designate an area perhaps on your plan for snow removal storage, or we could make a condition that no snow would remain there, I guess, but, 'cause I don't, I, you just don't have a lot of space there, and that would really impact the parking area. The, there was a question about the dumpster location, or lack thereof, a dumpster designation?
It would be private, like DuSau would probably come, they'd have to, the condo docs would state that they have to keep their rubbish inside, and then the condo association wills contract with the, with the, with the contract.
And the four condominium units would then bring them out on a scheduled basis to the front of the driveway, or...
Or maybe the pedal people would come and get it from their locations.
Okay, so there won't be a dumpster on site?
No, there won't.
You could make that a commission.
There's currently a sidewalk on this side of the street?
Yeah, along...
Does it run the length of, from the six-unit building down, does anybody know, down across the...
It goes around the block, yeah.
Around the block and all the way down to the mini mall?
Yes.
Okay.
Goes in the other direction, too.
I, I wondered, because, I think, again, as our, our chair said, we're all pretty much in favor of it, and especially the ruggle center aspect, you don't have to sell, sell us on that anymore, and it's great that you're proposing this cooperative thing, but I wondered if the ruggle centers really takes off, and what do we do about larger trips, like bus trips or things like that? Would they be, can you park on the street there?
Well, there's, right now, there's signs on, on this side, the, the side that the building is on, that says no parking, but I believe it's a lot on the other side of the street. But I was thinking of going to the, the parking commissioner and asking if they could reverse that on that side, where they might put some parking spaces in front, and they could go right up the street, the street's plenty wide for that also.
Because the, the parking does seem a little tight, given the four units, and even though I think it's mentioned in the permit, it would just be volunteers in the, the front unit, still, you could have as many as two people in each of the other units and six cars, so I know that, that might become a little tricky.
And I have a good question. You've had since one o'clock to look at this DPW comments, have you addressed those at all?
Actually, Aaron's had since about six o'clock, uh, to look at those.
Do you see any problem meeting those conditions?
I, I actually, and I, he hasn't even, I just verbally relayed those to him, and it's regarding the, the drainage stuff.
I think mainly, yeah, what I said is mainly issue around the drainage. Part of the application, we actually asked for waiver for this part of, for the drainage, because really, when you go through a DEP, this is no different from a one single family home, in terms of the amount of drainage you, we generate. And DEP a lot, in, or four lot residential, you're exempt for any stormwater management. And to do really a full drainage analysis for this less than half an acre, you get change in decimal points, hundred of a decimal point, which is really meaningful, meaningless. And, and that was the argument, and that's why we, we asked for waiver. Doug McDowell, who usually reviewed drainage for the city, typically review anything that above one acre, and there is a permit for above one acre. He reviewed this, and he had some comment, one of the comments that he has, he wanted to see some calculation. And we had a little discussion back and forth, he said, I would be happy to provide you with the calculations, but really, we can play with the number and show that it's gonna work, but really, we're talking about the difference between pre and post is decimal point, is nothing that, you know, that anybody would ever gonna see.
So was he convinced?
So, his argument said, well, we asked for other government with the city to do the same, so I asked you to provide that, so, and I did. So I gave him the calculation, and I think you have probably the calculation in front of you. And I think that the comment that he has was on the infiltration, what we, what we did here in terms of drainage is, everything goes to the front of the drainage, goes into bio-retention cells, which is a low-impact kind of development. There is a perforate pipe around, all around the perimeter of the front and side.
Is that what's shown on L101?
It's a grading, you can't... I think it's, yeah, 102. So you could see that the, the little gardens right in front with stone, rocks...
So can you, can you, based on whatever you know about this memo, will you be able to address that for the next year?
Address what?
Their comments, DPW's comments for the way to drainage, 'cause as a board, we can't overrule what the DPW requests for drainage. I'm like, we've never done that at, perhaps it has been...
I mean, the other thing, apparently, that Jim mentioned, that the conservation commission says they don't want the perforated pipe, so that's gonna, that changes when they...
I, I think that was just on the, would that be the west side, the east side?
There's a concern of draining the wetland because of the high water, high groundwater. So a lot of these comments from DPW relate to the concern about infiltration and draining the, the groundwater. So I think these comments probably need to be reevaluated in the light of the changes the conscom was asking.
So again, my, my point is, for, I, I read the, that really, he saw the calculation and he commented about it. We can go back and forth on the calculation, but really, at the end of the day, it's really meaningless, we're talking about support. And when you need to provide drainage calculation for four lot and more, according to DEP, is to show pre and post condition. You're adding more pavement, so you're increasing the runoff. But for the amount, the size of this project, the increase is so minimal that with the mitigation that we provided, we can buffer this increase.
Then you have no problem convincing Doug that that's...
So...
So, yeah, I, I think, we're sort of spinning our wheels here, the point is, yeah, I think the point is, you have to make the DPW happy, at least reasonably happy about it. It's not that on some technicality, we might be able to override, but essentially, the thrust of the thing is that you have to convince them somehow about the minimal impact.
Just to follow up on that, I did try to contact Doug this afternoon after I got this, and I couldn't get in touch with him, but presumably, he'll respond to me before, you know, by next week, and that will be for the next year.
Well, I, part of my, I mean, it's not frustration, it's just that we submitted about two months ago, this package, and I talked to Doug and contacted him, gave him the information, asked for feedback, and usually, it comes at four o'clock before the hearing, unfortunately, and so we don't have the time to kind of...
Yeah, we know.
Correctly.
Yeah, we know.
But there had been, let me just wanna clarify, there had been back and forth between you, it's not that it, you didn't ever hear about these issues until one o'clock this afternoon, so, I mean, that's my understanding from DPW, so it's not...
No.
All we're saying is, there's no point you telling us decimal points, because we're not the ones that need to be convinced, you need to go and meet with Doug and get into take these conditions off.
We'll take, we'll take care of it. Would you like to go to the next issue, next question?
I just have a question with the parking, the ADA space, that only has to be a standard space designated for ADA, it doesn't have to be van accessible?
What page do you look back to?
Well, just anyone who showed parking lot, right?
One oh two?
One oh two, that's the, that's the ADA space, I, I can't say for certain, I thought it had to be a van accessible space, but I could be wrong.
Uh, no, under, typically, you need for 30 spaces, I believe.
It's one for every 20, it's one for every 25 spaces, I just kinda remember it's a, it has to be a van accessible space, not...
Right, I don't think we, we get to this threshold of, of van, because we have only 12 or 13 spaces.
What's that? I think it's one space, if you have one space in a parking lot, you have to have to be ADA accessible, so...
Van accessible.
It is, yeah.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah?
You gotta check on it, anyway, to make sure.
The only reason I raise that is because it'll impact your parking layout, if you have to accommodate the width or the extra width for doors opening itself, so...
So let's stay on that parking for a minute. For the four units, what is the zoning, that should be now on parking spaces, we should act? Does that count, I count, one, two, three, four, five, six, 11 spaces on the plan?
Yeah.
One handicap.
Including the handicap.
I think we went through the calculation, that's the right, that's the number that's required.
They need 11 for that?
It's on the zoning form.
I think, I think on the, the notes page, it was nine was required. I, I, on the, you know, but I'm not sure.
But is that, I guess, I, I mean, follow, nine spaces required, but will any of the live-work actually have customers or people?
Because it would have a, it has to conform with the uses in SI, so...
That corresponds to, that part of the calculation takes into account to this...
Right.
Yeah.
Which is all around square foot.
Right, one for 500 square feet, so it's 6,000 total for the live-work units, so...
So no museum parking?
Um, yes, there's one, there's two per thousand for the live-work spaces.
See, I'm looking at the, the actual application.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's one, it would be two for the dwelling, the dwelling component is a thousand, or three thousand square feet, so that's six spaces for the residential component, and then it's one for thousand for the, so it's three more for the work space of the live-work, so that's nine. Then the museum, then would be, I forget, the total coverage of the museum.
For some reason, for some reason, I thought that, and I'm not correcting you, but it was almost like there were two grandfather in or something, like that, so I think we had, that's why we had nine, but...
There's no grandfather in because they're single-family use, you have two parking spaces, it was a conform.
Yeah, I, I've, I can't speak to the...
That's right, Carol, I'm looking at the calculations on the actual application.
Yeah.
And it says they needed 10, but it's using a different calculation than the theory that happened on the application itself. It said, one for 500 feet of living space, which would be six, but it says three, I don't understand how they did the calculations, it says three plus five.
So, but whether it's nine or 10, they're still fission at this point, they have 11.
No, but I think it's more, it was nine for three, the work units, but that didn't take into account, how many do you need for the museum?
One per four square feet of museum.
Right, how big's the museum?
We're definitely not gonna approve this tonight, the whole thrust of this, the next three minutes should be to raise all the question that we have, and make sure that they get addressed, we don't need the answers to them today.
Right, so what we're trying to do is ascertain that the parking as designated here was correct, and we...
So we can tell them it has to be correct as a law to the next problem.
I don't quite understand this submission, which shows the change in the boundaries, I guess there's some, not disagreement, but you're purchasing some land or changing the survey, the surveyor's plan?
Oh, you have the boundary assumption?
Yeah. So this will be confirmed at the time of final submission, or is it already?
Will be confirmed.
So this currently still hasn't been, okay. 'Cause you're, you're purchasing a whole nother wedge of property up here or...
No, actually, my dude says that I have a lot more land than what that plan is showing.
Okay.
And so, which is not uncommon, as you probably know, in these areas, so this plan reflects the abutter's deeds. So the left and right was what's the property lines was, could vary, so we took the most conservative line based on their deeds, so our deed will match their deeds, and...
And you don't have to cut off that over any roof?
No.
Okay, great. There's, on, on the plan, there's on the, boy, what is that, north, south, east, west, the, the part towards the mini mall, there's a little note that says temporary sign per zoning. So on one side, there's a sign, and, and on the other side of the property, closer towards the high school, there's another sign.
Market.
There'd be two signs?
One market sign, one permanent sign for the, for the educational center.
Okay.
And the live-work spaces, if they want.
So there would be two signs, did you say marketing, or?
Marketing.
Marketing sign for the live-work and one marketing sign for the educational center.
When I say marketing, it would be a temporary sign.
Perfect, oh, okay, so that's a temporary real estate kind of thing, while you're, okay. Have you had any conversation, Lord, with the abutters on the owner of the six-unit thing regarding any kind of, I guess you have, regarding any kind of screening between the buildings and the abutting property?
I, I actually, I, I know Mike Wade, who owns a six-family building very well. I, I actually, I, I know Mike Wade, who owns a six-family building very well, he'll be doing the work over there if we get it. His concern was, you know, was water in his basement, and he looked at our plan and he thought that, you know, we were going to be helping him by doing that. He says, you know, he's, he would prefer not to see it there, but he said, I own it, I have a right to do what I want, just as he has a right to do what he wants with his property, so I said, will you work on the, on the project? And he said, yeah.
So that existing arboretum hedge will stay there?
Yes.
And?
And I have spoken with the, there is one abutter in back, there's the, the church is in back, and then there's one abutter over here, the eat years. I've been emailing Bob Eat Year back and forth, and his last email to me was, good luck with the project.
You know, I, I hate to open up the public hearing to, to the public, but if anybody has any issues that they want to raise that they think might affect the next two weeks of their plans, anybody have any comments for the public?
Well, I was going to speak in favor of it, I, I don't know, I could come back if we're meeting in two weeks.
That's, that's no problem, and you don't have to speak in favor of it, you can speak like that.
Can I ask you when it is that you're going to be meeting again to talk about it?
As soon as we have a motion, we will, we'll let you know.
I, I guess, I guess I would like to speak in.
Sure.
I, I'll speak very briefly. Should I come up there?
Time's up.
I mean, given my history of coming here and speaking in opposition to development so many times, I thought it would be fun to come here and speak in favor of something, and I really am very strongly in, in favor of this project. I don't have anything to add technically to the conversation, but I, I just wanted to say, as Jim did, that this is, the, the design is a result of a lot of hard work by Jim and citizens of North Hampton who have really worked cooperatively together, and it, it appears to be environmentally, historically, socially, and economically sound. It's being done and designed in the greenest way possible, as I understand it. With a museum and education center and live-work spaces for artists, this project will provide needed housing and valuable education locally and beyond North Hampton in an innovative model. The live-work space as proposed complements other development plans that you discussed earlier tonight, I think, in Florence for cooperative shared space for artists. I think this project will also help revitalize the village of Florence, as indicated by responses to our fundraising campaign. I'm a member of the David Ruggles Center Committee, and we've been launching a campaign to raise money. And we've had a lot of good response locally and nationally, and so I think this, this project is, you know, it's also putting North Hampton on the map in a good way. And as I said at the recent city council meeting, where the CPC granting of funds was approved by the council, I, I really do, just, I know I don't have to sell you on this, but I just want to say as a citizen that I really do think this is a stunning example of developers and citizens working together for the common good, and I just, I'm so, I feel very lucky to have participated in that, given my history in the city, and I really want to thank Jim for listening to the concerns of, of people in the city for what, what could be a really good use of, of the properties. So thank you, and I hope you will improve it.
Thank you, and you are reminded who you are.
What?
What's your name?
Amy Booklander.
Okay.
And I live in Leeds.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, is there anyone who wants to raise any objections? If not, have a continuation or... Oh, can have a question.
Is there any lighting proposed, exterior lighting?
Yes.
We had a little picture of Spal West, colonial.
Yeah.
Was that the store?
Is there a plan? I didn't, I didn't see it.
It's the tiny...
I see six of them.
So make sure they're on the plan.
Yeah, I think that there are somewhere.
Nothing at all in the backyard, these are all by the garage doors, it looks like.
And then by court, you have to have something next to the court.
By the knee dress, and so then there are side doors on the, the east, I know, east elevation, then all of these entries, all these doors, so that's some kind of lighting?
Yes, probably.
It's a lot of size, it's a big barn.
With Craig's involvement, I'm sure there will be light racks.
There will be.
It should be on the plan. Okay, come on, come on. Motion to continue the hearing until when?
If you want to do it Tuesday, you can do it there, please, second.
What time?
Eight thirty?
Yeah, but that's, are we...
Oh, not eight thirty, I'm sorry, nine?
That's assuming we spend an hour on those.
This was started, yeah.
Nineteen. Are they doing it nine fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll have everything straightened out, and it'll be smooth sailing, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, the other thing, just, your, mass development's coming at seven, if you don't want to use the whole hour for mass development, you could put this one on at seven forty-five.
We can put this one at seven forty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a point, I, I won't be here for the next week, so.
You won't be here for the next week.
Just in case, I suppose.
Anyone else have any problem with?
Well, did you know that after North Street, I'm not going to sit in the audience for several hours and then come back for, so.
So you can do it at seven forty-five, and mass development's coming at seven, if you feel like you can have your conversation with them in less than an hour, then you can say seven forty-five, and then go out.
Let's do that.
Okay, yes, do that. Okay, can I have all your ducks in a row, Ray?
If we get, do we get the feedback, Carolyn, we'll have everything, we'll have everything taken care of.
Okay. Did you make them finish the vote? Seven forty-five, maybe turn on.
Twenty seconds.
Second? Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, we never discussed the, the second driveway on curb cut, is that out of our purport, we're asking a waiver, or?
No, that's part of your...
Because that would be a big change to the plan.
Look at the constraints of the plan.
Yep.
Because the whole point of the project is to keep the house where it is, so you can lose those shit to the house one side of the other. That would be my, you know, is it desirable to have two curb cuts? No, but it looks like a relatively low-impact development, we're only talking five or six basic meter sites, it's not like they're feeding into large parking, parking lots, so taking the site constraints into consideration, you know, in a desirable mode, but normally five, right, or not.
That's fine, that's where I was coming from, but I wanted to make sure, are there any other waivers that we should tuck on before we just likely go on to the next hearing? Was there, no?
All in favor? Okay, anything out of this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't take a flashbang. Hey, Captain, we have other business, you make a motion, you adjourn, go fast.
I make the motion, speaker.
I'm against that. Seconded by Jennifer, all in favor?
I must have stood out the one.
Come on, raise your hand, everybody. Okay, good. Well, it's passed.